I'm just waiting for her to get back there soon. Ready to roll?
Yeah.
Call the meeting to order. Announcements, next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, August 21st, 2015, at 9:00 AM at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please turn off your cell phones. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from the June 12th and June 26th meeting, as well as the budget for the district and the treasurer's report and golf financials.
I still move.
Second.
I have no comments.
None for me.
Public comment? Back to the board. Call the roll.
Supervisor Halbert?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes. Action agenda, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2015-07/10-21, a resolution on the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award the base bid on general liability and work month's compensation insurance and the optional coverage for XL liability, RFP 15-05, to Public Risk Management of Florida and World Risk Management Incorporated, and to obtain the requested optional coverages of pollution and remediation legal liability and storage tank third-party liability from Florida League of Cities Incorporated and Florida Municipal Insurance Trust.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, Tanya, there are a lot of numbers here, kind of big numbers. Does that 131 that we're talking about, is that in one line item in the budget?
No, sir, it's spread out amongst the departments.
Okay, why don't you just walk us through this whole situation here? Because a lot involved, I'm not sure what we're addressing here.
Okay, we currently pay $166,000 a year for our liability, general, and workers' comp insurance.
Now, that's spread across the entire employee?
Throughout the departments, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. We decided to put this out for bid, we received two bids, and Public Risk Management was the lower of the two for $131,586. So that is a savings of $33,000 a year. We also received, we requested some additional coverages for pollution and remediation legal liability and storage tank third-party liabilities. The only bidder for those additional coverages was the Florida League of Cities.
Why is that? Why did we request that?
Well, we currently have those coverages separately outside of the Public Risk Management, and I just wanted to see what other prices we could get for those type of coverages. But we only had one responsive bidder for those, and that's exactly what we pay now. I mean, we've been paying those coverages for many years.
I guess the question I got, what happened for Public Risk Management to drop their price by $30,000?
In talking to Public Risk, they, as of June 30th, they were quoted some pricing on the assets that came in much lower than what has been quoted to us in the past. So they were able, PRM is a risk pool, so there's many governments that participate, and they're able to provide those same coverages to us now at a lower cost.
Okay. Any other comments? Public comment? Back to the board.
I have one question. Does this expense, is this included in our employee benefit markup, or is that just separate?
It's a separate line item in every department.
Okay, I remind Jenny that she still owes me a breakdown.
She does, yes.
Call the roll.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbert?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes.
Need a motion, oh, wait a minute, we don't need a motion there. Request from Harstein Golf for 30-day extension on Deer Run Car Path Replacement Project.
Mr. Harstein of Harstein Golf has requested a 30-day extension from the original contract date of July 31st, extending it to August 31st, 2015. This is to avoid the liquidating damages of $500 per day, and, you know, we, Harstein has encountered delays, you know, due to the notice of deficiencies and the stop work order that we have sent him, but at this point, he's moving forward, and we are satisfactory with the work that he is completing.
The only comment I got is he created the problem to begin with, but the point is, he fixed it, he's moving on. I actually looked at all the car paths this morning, everything looks fine to me, I think he's moving along okay, and I certainly don't have a problem with it. Anybody else? All right.
I rode the cart path last night, and to bring some of you up to date, number one needs to be finished, and nine at the green needs to be finished, but everything in between is done and looks good.
So that's all we have to do on that?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the action agenda is request from Mr. Gregory Griffin for reimbursement of legal fees. You want to take the lead? Okay. Couple days ago, Tanya and I sat down and we tried to come up with some talking points, I guess would be the best way to put it, in terms of how to deal with this, and I, we came up with four viable options. You guys can look at them, I'll pass them out, they'll put it up on the board for you. And I'm not sure which way is the way to handle this, but we'll start with this, and maybe we can just start eliminating things and boil it down to something. So obviously, option number one is basically just do nothing. Just let it go where it goes and whatever. Of course, every item on there has ramifications, some are extreme, some maybe not so extreme. So anybody want to make a comment at this point?
Well, I'm surprised we're even gotten to this point. There is nothing in our protocol, our procedures, or any legal basis in Sun and Lake District to allow for this kind of a payment. The whole point of reimbursement was a defense of charges. This is not a defense, this is an attack. And as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't warrant any more discussion, so I'll leave it at that.
Well, I was surprised when I saw this, I thought we were through with it last week. I kind of agree with Dick about it, but I never saw these options before.
Just made them up.
Just made them up. Oh, so there's been no interface?
No.
Has anybody talked to Mr. Griffin at all?
As far as we know, he's still under legal counsel, and we can't talk to him, as far as I know.
Well, you know, we've got procedures in place for these complaints that weren't followed. You know, this thing's been going on forever and ever, and it's not going to go away, this guy, he's going to keep coming back and coming back and coming back. If we do nothing, he's going to come back, you know. If we pay attorney fees and he resigns, that, I didn't see that option, that'd be a good option for me, because I think if it doesn't happen, we're going to have, we're going to have a problem going forward. If he would, if he would sign a covenant that said he's not going to sue the district, we give him $12,000 as a, as a going-away present and let him resign. That would be a good option for me, but, you know, they keep coming at me and I'm the villain. I mean, in his last letter, his attorney accuses me of breaking the law. That's the first time I saw that, and that's a libelous statement. I mean, I might ask the district to give me legal help to go after him and after his attorney on this thing. This thing, it never ends, this, I don't know where they're coming from, and it's all because I was trying to do my job, and now it's because, because I didn't sign an informal agreement, and I had a very good explanation at the last meeting why this informal agreement wasn't signed, because it would preclude all policies that we've got written. And our policies are in place, they've been in place for years, and I've never seen anything like this. It's ridiculous. I mean, we're wasting our time, it's a distraction to everybody, it just, it doesn't seem to, seem to, seem to end, so. Option two's good for me, but I don't think that's probably going to happen, but if that doesn't happen, then I say we do nothing, because there's nothing, there's nothing in any of these resolutions. We didn't file a complaint against Mr. Griffin. The letter that the attorney sent is riddled with erroneous statements. She said that she, she was hired to address the complaints, and actually, she was hired before the, before I even saw the complaints, and actually, before two of the complaints were ever written. I mean, we got this public records request from his attorney on April the 23rd, and he had hired that attorney before then. Complaint number two came in April the 23rd, and complaint number three came in April the 28th, and I didn't see any of them until the 30th of April. It's ridiculous. So where's it going to end? Somebody, this whole board is going to have to say, look, we're going to have to be unified, and we're going to have to say, this is what's going to have to happen. If I do it, it's going to be a retaliatory thing for me. I mean, that's the way it's going to be looked at, boom, they'll be coming at me again. It's ridiculous, so, right now, that's it.
My opinion, it's just very unfortunate we got involved in this. Most of it comes back to our former district manager. This thing could have been nipped to begin with, within 24 hours and been forgot about. But no, he chose not to do that, and it's just got bigger and bigger and bigger. I've talked to some of the help at the district, I've talked to Tanya about it a few minutes. It, they all think Greg is doing a good job, I think he's doing a decent job. Has he made mistakes? Yes, he's made some mistakes. I would be in favor of number four, but I think anything else, I'm not in favor of.
Richard, you got a comment? Richard?
I'm still thinking.
Oh, Rick, okay.
Do you want me to weigh in on this now, or wait till?
No, I think, I think you should weigh in.
Well, you're correct, there is no legal obligation to pay these fees, it's for, you know, Mr. Miller, you're correct in that there is an offense.
And there's no precedent either, is there?
Correct, correct. However, these options that'll basically amount to a legal settlement agreement. Mr. Griffin has not filed any technically legal complaint, it's just been back-and-forth communications between attorneys, nothing's been filed in court. However inadvisable that may be, he still has that option at this point. If one of these settlement options is considered, that could potentially be nipped in the bud, and we really could in this thing. If he's, you know, obviously, if he's in favor of any of these, that's what it would end up being, is a settlement agreement between the parties. But as far as a legal requirement to abide by this request, there is none.
I, my personal opinion is that I think that... Is my mic on?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we need to settle this and get it over with, and it appears to me that most likely, option number three or number two would be the best option that we have.
Well, my business sense kicks in here, and 12,000 bucks, to me, is a good way to end it, and a good way to make sure this doesn't balloon into hundreds of thousands of dollars, so I'm in favor of three or four, and just get this thing done, and if he's willing to agree to end this issue, then I would be in favor of either one, I don't care, but...
Probably the best way to proceed then would be to authorize either myself or Tanya to contact his attorney and make a proposal for, you know, any of these, at least items two, three, and four, to see if he's agreeable to any of them, because if he's not, you know, we can force him to agree.
Right, there's no reason to do anything. So should we just take a consensus vote here in terms of which option we want to go with? Is that how we kind of come up with one?
Well, if you want me to present just one, or two, or three, however, whatever you want me to present, I'll present to his counsel in order to try and conclude it, and that's up to you, which...
Well, the problem with option two, and I guess I didn't put that in there, but I said, if he resigns, he would also have to agree to end the issue, which, if he wants the job, he's not going to agree to number two, and I'm not going to agree to number two if he doesn't agree to end the issue, so, to me, the only two options that are viable, unless we rephrase number two, that three or four would be the only two that I would agree to.
I'm definitely opposed to that.
Okay.
Let's rework number two, if we have to do that.
Okay.
Get it over with, but he needs to, I think you're correct in terms of not pursuing it, and that needs to be in writing. But I'll never agree to three or four.
I will, I will never agree to three or four, ever, and to say this is, that this guy can come back to work and it's not going to be problems going forward, is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of in my life. This guy's a disgruntled employee who doesn't take any responsibility for anything, and when somebody brings up, I'll tell you the problem with this whole thing is, when policies are broken, this board needs to be unified together when they, when it happens, and I don't even think this would have happened in the first place. This is ridiculous, because he thinks he's getting support from people, and obviously he is, and it's ridiculous, it's not going to go away, this is a problem. I'll never agree, never agree to anything but one or two if he chooses to resign and not, and not, and not bring any suit against the district.
I guess my question to you would be, number two, if he retakes the 12,000 and resigns, that doesn't end the issue, though. I mean, he can still come back.
Well, I believe that any, any settlement agreement at all should include the conclusion of the issue.
Well, why don't you present those three to him and see what, what, what happens?
Why are we even considering three? I think the board is better to decide what option they want to present to, I don't like three options. As far as I'm concerned, number two is the only option I would even consider.
What's your, what's your choice?
Number two with, with no recall.
Three? Well, we got, we got three, too, so that's where we're going. You just have to add the, he has to agree to end the issue to that.
David, I think you have to be very, very clear on the wording that you present. I assume that, how is this going to happen? Is Tanya, you and Mr. Schumacher going to present this? Is that the idea?
I'll draft a response to his attorney's letter that basically spells out what the board is, you know, decides when an actual vote's taken, to say the board has voted, this is the option that we're presenting. Obviously, do nothing is always, you know, is always an option, you know, because Mr. Griffin can decide, no, I'm not going to entertain any, any settlement, you know, options.
Okay, just, just as long as presented very clearly as that is it.
Yes.
Okay.
If, if, if this doesn't work, then I would, I'm willing, more and more willing, to do a complete and thorough investigation of this whole thing. We need for somebody to say, this person's at fault, or that person's in fault, and be done with it. That, that's what needs to happen, and, and if he won't, if he doesn't agree to what this board has agreed to, then the next stage, I think, we need to go through a complete investigation. If Brian Cogee could have been, would have said, this person is wrong, or that person is wrong, it would have been, it would, I think it would have cleared it up. He never does, you know, it's like, well, we've got a scale here, and we're tipping it a little bit this way, or we're tipping it a little bit that way, but I'm not going to say one way or the other. Thorough and complete investigation with a third party would get to the root of this whole problem. We'd have everybody in this daggone district, from poor old John McClure to the guy washing dishes at the restaurant, would be deposed, and we'd get to the bottom of it, once and for all. It would clear the air, so...
Alrighty, you got your marching orders, right?
You need to take a vote on how, specifically to proceed, is it just going to be option two?
Yeah, there's three guys said option two, so, that's a majority.
I don't know if it's technically a resolution, but if that's, I think we need to take a vote, quite honestly.
I thought we did, we did.
Well, we consensus vote. Alrighty.
It's along those lines, Tanya, did you, I had requested that you inform officially Mr. Griffin as to Section 8H in the employee manual about secondary employment.
I have not formally done that yet.
Would you do so, please?
Yes.
For the protection of the district.
All right, next on the agenda is add-on items? No? Because it's not a resolution? I, as far as I know, David, you want to tell me if I'm wrong?
They'll have to be, they're not voting to spend the money, they're voting to offer the money. When they, they'll come back for a formal resolution, you know, to present to the board as to how, if Mr. Griffin says, no, I'm not going to settle, there's no reason in preparing a resolution. They will have to prepare a formal settlement statement and bring it to the board for approval.
Thank you very much. Add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications.
The board did receive a couple of letters from Linda West regarding the tree planting issue, she did request that they were, would be read verbatim into the record, based on district policy. A reading of petitions and communications, which is B1212, all correspondence received by the district shall be placed in the next available agenda package to be presented to the Board of Supervisors by the Board Secretary. The letters are, will be attached to the minutes and included in the package, there's no reason to read it into the, to the record verbatim.
All right.
Is there any way, in this last letter that Linda West sent, she's agreed to pay for the, she didn't say that necessarily, but if they agree to pay for the relocation of the trees, and they don't survive, they reimburse the district for the relocation and everything, you know, I've got, I don't want to, I don't want to make, I'd like for this thing to end as well, but over on Turtle Run, we're taking out hundreds of pine trees so people get a better view of the golf course. But on Deer Run, we're planting trees in everybody's view where there was never a tree before, and I know, I think, maybe, maybe what we need to do is, is lick our wounds and say, look, we didn't have anything to do with it, but we might be able to resolve it by relocating a few trees, and it's not, I mean, you've got to listen to the residents when they have issues, and this is, to them, it's a serious issue, and it would be for me if I had them stuck in front of my house. I think it's like, in your face, and there's nothing we can do about it. I think there is something we can do about it, so I would like for the board to consider that, and, and be done with it. If they're willing to pay for pulling the trees out, relocating them, and if they die, pay for the trees, you know, maybe don't take all four of them out, but a couple of them. Let's, let's try to compromise something and, and get this, get this behind us. What do you think, Larry?
I just, we went over this three other times before, before now. I've looked at those trees, I have trees behind my house, you have trees behind your house, I think when you start taking out trees, there's no end to it, maybe one of them's been there 20 years, I'd like to have it out, you know? I'm sorry, but it, I can't see where it's blocking that much view.
Yeah, but when they plant them, when they plant them there, when they weren't there before, and it's supposed to be a reforestation, that doesn't make any sense at all, especially when, on the other golf course, we're clearing out so people got a view. It's just, for something, something's just not balanced here.
Well, I've talked to several people that would like to have them out, and if we take these out, we're going to take out another eight or 10 people.
I haven't heard anybody except Jerry Van Nystrom and Linda West come to the board asking for relief, so, I don't know.
I don't think anybody else has come to the board, but several have made comment. Sorry about that, I said several have made comment to me.
Any other comments?
I think you might open a can of worms, but then again, maybe moving a couple of those trees might satisfy her and get us, get the thing over with.
You dropped on both sides of the fence on that one.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, look...
Well, my, my only concern is, once you start the ball rolling, it's going to keep on rolling, and again, behind my house, I got eight 30-foot pine trees behind my house, and I have no trouble seeing the green, I have no trouble seeing people playing golf, and, and I think I'm not in favor of doing anything myself. I mean, we, we already decided not to do anything, and they just keep bringing it back, bringing it back, and it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's over and done with, that's it.
I officially notified Mrs. West with a letter from June 21st, just letting her know that the Board of Supervisors took no action at the June 12th meeting, and that her letters have been attached to the official minutes of June 12th. I did that on June 21st.
Well, the only comment I want to make is, I think it was extremely unfortunate that the district reacted the way it did when this first came up, and those trees, for one reason or another, were, were dying. The idea of calling the sheriff's department and the idea of putting a camera up on the tree is insulting, and I said it before, and I'll say it again, and to me, that, I tend to agree that once we start removing trees, then we've got a whole change, I'm with Larry, I have a lot of people that talked about these trees, but as residents, they have every right to be treated with respect, and they were not treated with respect when that situation occurred, that was district harassment, and I think we owe them an apology for that.
All right, you want to draft a letter to that regard, then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Staff reports.
To Neil Drury Smith, Community Services Director, I just wanted to talk a little about and recap what's been going on this summer so far. First, with summer camps, we have had the largest attendance by far. We've had, usually our cutoff is 30, 35, and we have been pushing that limit just about every week thus far, and it's been going, Jonathan and his staff have been doing a great job with the kids, keeping them entertained, and several kids have been coming back week after week, so we're hoping to continue with that program in the future. The Independence Day celebration was going wonderful, we had probably the largest attendance we've ever, ever seen for any special event, but Mother Nature decided about 8:30 that she was ready to drop some, some rain on us, so... on us, so, given the situation and the radar, we had to postpone the fireworks, and they're rescheduled for this evening. So the only thing that will be taking place this evening will be the fireworks portion of, of the event. So that will be going off at 9 o'clock tonight.
Is there a charge for that?
There was a restocking fee of $525.
Restocking?
No, I, I meant for people to attend.
No, no, tonight, there, there is no, um, there's no charge for people to come and enjoy the fireworks. And, and the only place that we really put it out there is on Facebook, and it did get some activity. We really didn't get any negative comments about canceling. I think people understood that the lightning was terrible, so, um, so hopefully after tonight, Mother Nature will cooperate, and we'll have a fireworks show.
Um, when you sign a contract for fireworks, do you have a rain date in that contract, or not?
No.
You don't?
No.
Is there a cancellation fee? In other words, if they didn't go off last Friday, and we just, so we just don't do it, um, is there a, a fee for that, canceling?
I, I don't, I didn't read that in the contract. Um, I know that he has never had to postpone a fireworks show, this was a first for him, so, he, we have done business with him for several years, I'm sure that if something happens this evening, um, that he would, obviously, we're probably not going to reschedule them again, that we would come to some sort of agreement.
It kind of seems anticlimactic here, you know?
Yes, yes.
In fact, I was going to suggest, "We don't even do it to you," but you'd already announced that we are going to do it, so, um, but anyway, here we are, we're going to do it.
Yes.
But I would think about those in the future, in terms of scheduling, uh, rain date, and making sure there is no cancellation fees, if for some reason we do get rained out. And secondly, I'd like to say, you know, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Um, thinking back four or five years, in terms of the community activities around here, and what you've grown to today, I, I think speaks highly of your staff and yourself as well.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. And that's all I have, we're, you know, looking towards the fall for the trigger trot, but other than that, things will be pretty quiet after summer camp gets over with, getting ready for season.
That's good.
Thank you.
Morning, Mike Curley, Security.
I can't hear you, Mike.
Mike Curley from Security.
Might you just hold it in your hand?
Yep, pull that out.
Can't, that better?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Bob and I attended a, a, a code enforcement, um, class, uh, the week of, uh, from the 23rd till 26th. We met with, um, and, and one of the main reasons why we wanted to go is to clarify a lot of our, uh, rules here at Sunning Lake. We met with a, the, the code enforcement lawyer, um, for the state of Florida, and he, and, um, there were five or six, um, code enforcement, um, problems we have here at Sunning Lake, parking, um, uh, the, also, the way that we, we, um, send letters out to people, how long we have to wait, wait to, um, for instance, the parking, we have a two-day, two-day-a-month parking. Once we give them the two-day, um, letter, after they go over two days, we give them a letter. Once we give them that letter, uh, the following month, we always read, read that they could start over. That's not true. So there's a lot of things we learned through this class. There are five or six code enforcement, uh, problems we have here that we want to bring to the board for changes. We will bring that probably the next meeting. We'll, uh, we'll have to meet with the, uh, John's office to go through how we have to do it, but, um, a year, um, a year, we probably give four or 500 citations. I don't think we collect on, on, uh, too many of them, so we want to change that. We want to also change the way that, um, prepared services, um, are done, so we will bring, we will, we will be bringing all those changes to you, uh, within the next month or two.
Well, so far, you've only addressed parking, I mean, are there other code violations that we can address as well, like?
Yeah, yeah, there were five or six.
Five or six different code violations?
Different code, yes.
Okay, I understand.
Mike, I noticed in the, uh, proposed budget, you have a, another half position for code enforcement?
Yes, um, we hired a, a security, um, um, security, um, about two months ago. He's an action, he, he worked for the sheriff's department, so when Bob was out, what I did was had him get involved in code enforcement. Because of the, so many calls that we get, we, and the paperwork, we do need more help, help in code enforcement.
Well, look, code enforcement is, is, is a state of mind, and what I'm talking about is, we need people to go out there that understands the regulations, and are not afraid to enforce the regulations. Uh, I've got situations in my own neighborhood that, that have just gone begging for weeks and weeks and weeks. One of the things, we talk about parking, but when you, when you examine all this auxiliary parking, the reg, there's not one place that I'm aware of at Sunning Lake that people that are parking on their, their lawns have met the requirements in our code enforcement, and, and you've got to get tougher on this.
Those are the things that we want to change, Dick. Uh, for instance, prepared surfaces. Prepared surfaces right now, um, once we cite them, we give them a letter, explain to them what they have to do to fix it. Right now, we have prepared surface with, uh, with mulch. What they do is they go out and bag four or five bags of mulch, spread it out, and, uh, according to our rules, that's okay.
No, it's not.
It is.
In the past, according to our rules, they were. That's the way we were reading it. We did talk to, uh, the, uh, we did talk to the lawyer about this, and he just kind of shrugged his head and laughed and said, you know, "There is no way that, that, that should ever have been in there. It was put in there years ago, long before you, long before us." Those are the things that we want to change. We, I mean, that's, that, in my mind, that's really big, is the prepared surfaces, how we change it. We also found out, uh, that it cannot, cannot connect, it cannot connect to the road. A lot of prepared surfaces, what they do is right on the side of their, um, in their front yards, all they do is they pull in and, and park there. Well, of course, it wears out, and, and once we cite them, they, uh, put the mulch, which is absolutely ridiculous.
Well, we've got a sheriff's deputy in Montana who does that for, for...
He's legal, according to what we've been doing here for years, it's legal, Dick. You know, those are the things we're going to try to change.
Okay, you've got, uh...
What is...
Let me, let me finish, please. Bob, you're working, uh, are you back on the job? Good to have you back.
Well, thank you very much, I'm happy to be back.
Okay, uh, but you're working, uh, what, Mondays through Thursdays, or what, what's the schedule?
Monday through Fridays, work.
Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
Uh, we're not going to have any, uh, any staggered, uh, enforcement patrolling in the district in terms of weekends, or what?
Um, what he does, he works one Saturday every two months, you know, so we do stagger, but with this new employee, he also works security, but he'll, but he also works weekends.
Well...
And he's willing to go to school and do whatever we need to do.
Okay, we had a sort of informal procedure, some of your guys were, were also looking out for code enforcement, that, and it hasn't seemed to work very well.
Well, um, I'll show you all the reports, they do report lights, they do report cars, cars parking on lawns, it's just that, with the rule we have, the every two, I mean, they can park there, um, they can park there twice a month, it's almost impossible to, you know, once we cite them, once we go through the paperwork, right, then the two months start, that has to come out. It ha, I mean, what I would like to see, no parking at all, no, no two days at all. That would be a lot easier for everyone, including the residents, you know?
What are you going to do about this mulch situation?
We're going to bring that to you, and, and, uh, I think you have to vote on it, and we want to change it. So it's, I mean, we're going to bring everything to you, and, uh, if you make the changes, it's going to just make Sunning Lake better, it's going to make our, our job easier. So we will bring it to you next month. Uh, we have seven, seven items we want to change, and we're working on that right now. And, um, once we make the change, we, we want to send a flyer out to the whole Sunning Lake, probably with the water bill, and the do's and the don'ts of what you can do. The problem is, we have a lot of renters, uh, and they're, every six months, they change. I, I mean, there are some, some homes that actually change every six months, so then we have to start all over again, you know, educating them, educating them.
We want to do a better job at educating our residents, that's number one priority, uh, with, with all these changes that we're going to propose. That's our number one priority, is, is to communicate to our residents and educate them.
Change is good, and I, I commend you for, for, uh, bringing that up, but...
We're going to try.
Let me go back to what I said before, enforcement.
I understand it.
And, and it's not pleasant, I know, it's not a pleasant job, as Bob would probably tell you.
Bob has the worst job in Sunning Lake, I think, because no, because as soon as he cites somebody, you know, it's his fault, it's never their fault, and we all know that, I mean, you know, so... What do you want me to say?
Go get them, that's what I want you to say.
Alright.
Thank you.
David, looks like you're up.
Alright, there's no potential or threat litigation, I gave you guys your copies of the litigation report, um, the Zinon and Ayala matter, there was a mediation was conducted on June 22nd, uh, but that resulted in an impasse. Uh, Robert Deiker filed a motion for summary judgment against the, one of the plaintiffs, plaintiff Susan Stout, but that has not been set for a hearing, that's kind of moving forward slowly. Um, the rest of it is all pretty standard regarding, there's some foreclosure sales that have been set, but aside from, you know, utility liens that we'll probably lose out on, there's a, it's not going to affect the district much. And you also have the foreclosure report, um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Want to summarize that Severino situation?
That's the one, that's the Ayala, that's the, the one where they had the mediation, it was impasse, and, and the, when we, Tanya and I attended that, when was that, Tanya, back, we went to that hearing, or Case Management Conference, Drew Coen?
March or April?
Yeah. Um, the judge wanted all the discovery and everything finished by September 1st, but we've just found out that one of the attorneys, Nick Shomar, has apparently taken some time off for health reasons, so, so that may delay things further. Um, whenever you get this many attorneys involved in a, in a, in an action, it's very difficult to arrange schedules, but at some point, uh, when we went to that, that, that Case Management Conference, Judge Estrada is very adamant about getting it moving along.
Yeah, after what, four years?
Yeah.
You, uh, you want to elaborate on Mr. McClure's letter?
Um, I don't know if there's much to elaborate on, he's just...
Well, I don't think that's a general noise right now, so...
Yeah, well, um, I'm, if, if, I'm happy to read it into the, into the minutes if you'd like, uh, it says, "Dear Kurt, I am electing to reduce my workload somewhat. Toward that end, I would like for my associate, David Schumaker, to cover the district board meetings for the remainder of our contract. The contract with our firm runs through December 31st, 2015. Mr. David Schumaker is a designated, sorry, a designated attorney for representation pursuant to the contract. Mr. Schumaker has expressed a desire and willingness to represent the district board of supervisors, and I'm quite certain that he will do a very effective and competent job. If the district desires to continue representative, representation of the firm for the future, and specifically Mr. Schumaker as its principal counsel, then I'm hopeful that the relationship with our firm and Mr. Schumaker could continue. I would remain available to assist Mr. Schumaker with advice regarding district matters, but Mr. Schumaker will be present at the district board meetings. It has been an honor and privilege to represent the district for these many years. I wish to thank the district for the opportunities afforded me and the confidence provided. It is my hope and desire that the district continue to prosper and provide a quality community experience for its many residents. John McClure." So I started with Mr. McClure, going on three years now, um, the goal's always been for me to slowly but surely take over some of his responsibilities, and he's, like I say, the school, school board meetings as well, he's, he's the attorney for the school board, um, I've started to take over some of that as well, but, uh, yeah, I'm happy to serve the board.
Well, one of the, kind of, I don't know if you call it a problem, but one of the, uh, occasional issues we have was that, uh, John was, uh, stretched pretty thin, and in some, some cases, we suffered because of it. Now, it kind of scares me a little bit when you say that you're taking over the school board situation.
Well, no, I haven't, he hasn't sent a letter like this to the school board yet, no, so...
Alright, well, I guess I'm asking for your undivided attention to Sunning Lake?
Understood.
Okay.
General manager's report.
Through May 15th, 2015, the county has acquired 612 lots through the estimate process, with a total write-off of assessments, bonds, penalties, and interest of $11,750,000. Um, additionally, Welch has been in contact with our district engineer. Welch is the company that will be, um, performing the color coding on our new surface of asphalt, and, uh, hopefully, we're going to be able to schedule a meeting with them next week, and I, as soon as I have a date that, that's, the painting and the striping will be completed, or started, actually, I will forward all that information to the board and the staff, so I don't have a date as of yet. But the 30 days, uh, the asphalt, I think, June, uh, July 12th would be a 30-day period that they ask, the new asphalt has been in place.
Okay.
And we also, Towel, with Excavation Point, is, uh, currently finishing the landscaping around the tennis courts, I know we have a couple more deliveries of sod that's coming in, so we're, we're making that progress as far as the, the landscaping and the sod and the, and everything that was, uh, either damaged or, you know, whatever the case is during the construction period.
Uh, this might not be the appropriate time, but I want to, before Mr. Hanley slips out, uh, we've got this $40,600 item on the, in the golf budget on the, uh, on the taxes, and I've talked to you about it, and...
I haven't received a formal notice yet from the Raymond McIntyre's office, I'm still awaiting that formal notice.
Well, I, I thought it was all, already done, and ready, ready to go to the county commission.
No formal notice that we've been given, that we are going to be exempt from those property taxes, so, this is Raymond McIntyre, so we're still waiting.
Oh, it's up to him, it doesn't go to the county commission.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, we're still waiting.
Good.
Tanya, getting back to tennis courts, I believe, wasn't Billy, isn't Billy Casper responsible for maintaining the landscaping?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Boy, that was real, for obvious reasons, but it's a mess right now, so, we got a lot of...
They're working on that, yes, sir.
We got a lot of remedial work, and I assume that falls into their...
That's correct.
Well, no, the scope of the work, the scope of the work, all the mulch and everything has to be brought back exactly the way it was before the work started. That's, that's in the contract.
Well, yeah, I understand that, David, but, um...
But the maintenance.
The weeds are up, I mean, the whole thing has been let go, so I don't know who does that.
Cleans that mess up.
Maintenance would be the Billy Casper group, yes, sir.
Okay, so we do it.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment? Mr. Jackson, before you start, at the last meeting, I raised my hand to indicate that your three minutes was coming, and you said, "I offended you." I certainly don't want to offend you, so, um, how would you like me to let you know that your minute, your time?
I want to talk as long as I want to.
No, no, you won't talk as long as you want to.
I see, well, then you offend me already.
Oh, see, that, see, I don't have a problem with that.
Good. No, you don't, because I'll offend you, uh, as long as you...
Well, secondly, you, you also made a second offensive remark, and there is no reason for that.
What was that?
See, you don't even remember, you even make offensive remarks you don't remember.
No, I remember someone chewing gum and being disinterested.
Yeah, exactly, and if you want to get personal about this thing, you just let me know. I don't have a problem getting personal with you.
That's alright.
So you have the floor, sir.
Are you done?
I am done.
Good, then I won't hear any more from you. Um, Bill Jackson resident, landscaping, I don't think that's been good for four or five years. I'm driving over here, I had a lawn, a lawn right... lawn, a lawn right at the end of my house on Veskaya. That stuff was 18, 19 inches high. And I, well, I drove over here, now that was cut today, after weeks, and then I drove over here today, and there was another house on the left on Poncetalea Lawn, had high grass. I don't understand what the big thing is. You get grass that's out of, uh, out of compliance, you walk up to the door, you go, "Your grass is out of compliance, and if you don't get it done, we'll have to do something about it for you." And then they'll know. There's, there's fishing around, sending them a letter and all that stuff. It's no good. Now, let's get back to, um, Mr. Griffin. I always hate to see things turned back to where we give them money and we get out of it. Mr. Griffin is, is, is the dredge of the earth. Any man who can't keep his finances straight over years and years and had bankruptcies and all these banks, uh, done at him for money. I think what you should do is approach him and say, "We're not gonna do anything," and let him get a lawyer and start to sue. He has no money. How's he gonna pay for that? He's just gonna run up attorney bills he can't pay. We always fold to these people. We don't owe him anything. All we owe him is a foot and a butt, because we talk about all these instances. So, I think we should do nothing. I had the third one laugh and tell him to go away. And we'll, at the end of his sick time, when he's run out of money. This man's gonna run out of money before too long, and he's gonna still be off sick. How's he gonna make it? I don't know. Well, we all fold all, but we're frightened of him. He can't afford an attorney. How's he gonna pay that? So just tell him to, uh, tell him to stuff it. And then get your resolution, I told you the first time we brought this up, get your resolution together, terminate him. And then let him do whatever he wants to do. So, I, I, I see this, and I just look around, and, "Oh, he don't wanna give me money. Maybe he'll treat us right if we give him money." He's a snake in the grass. And he knows how to play those games, and he'll do it as long as he can. So why do anything for him? That's what he wants. I'd just send him on his way. Have I got my three minutes in yet?
I think you got a minute and a half yet.
Minute and a half. Well, maybe I can sit up here and we'll go through a few jokes or something, you know? I wanna use my whole three minutes. And if it offends you, I'm sorry.
But it didn't offend me, it offended you.
I, I don't give a shit if I offend you.
I don't either.
'Cause you're one of the worst people I've seen on this board in years.
Well, good to hear.
You show your contempt every time you're up there. And I hate to tell you, but we're, we're the residents of this district, and I personally don't like it. I even, I've had sharp words with many of these people on this board, but it was never, never like it was with you. We fought to get rid of some of these things we had before, a long time, controlled by other people. And the district's in good shape now. I hate to think what will happen when, uh, Mr. Miller and Mr. Halbig finally leave. All we need is a few more people like that who, who don't know what's going on. So, I got my three minutes yet?
You're done.
Well, I thank you. Well, no, I won't ask two more. I think I've taken care of
Tom Coste, resident. Um, I have a couple of questions. Today's meeting, I think, is noted on the website as a hearing? Budget, uh, discussion is noted as a hearing on the district meeting schedule? My question is with regard to this, uh, and it's, this is for the attorney. If it's a workshop, there's no public comment, is that correct? That's not a public meeting if it's a workshop?
This is intended to be a workshop.
The legal opinion is if there's a workshop, that is not a public meeting, and therefore the public has no means of commenting during a budget workshop?
Technically, it's not a regularly scheduled meeting.
It's not a regularly scheduled meeting?
If it's, if it's scheduled as a workshop, then it is not a regularly scheduled meeting of the board.
It's not a public meeting?
Well...
Doesn't come under the public meetings statute in the, in the state statutes? That's interesting. Um, secondly, with regard to the sound system in this building, I don't know how, maybe I'm the only one that listens, tries to listen to meetings, the auditory is, especially since we quit having these very detailed minutes that we had up until a year or so ago. We spent a lot of money on this building. You can go on the district, or the county website, and you can hear and see everything that takes place. You can do the same thing with City of Sebring. For instance, the City of Sebring has microphones for the people that are at the tables, that clip on their collars, and every single word is very clear and very understandable. When I try to listen to this meeting on the district website, I gotta turn all of my volume controls, all the way up, and even then, it's very difficult to hear some of the auditory. So I think, I'd ask, and I don't think these, these collar microphones, or those that are on a wand that is adjustable, for instance, somebody comes up here, if there was a wand here, they can stick it right up in their face and don't have to be fumbling around with this, and the guys don't have to be flipping and switching their microphones on the table and laying them down and all that interference that comes with it. We've been struggling with this for years, and all the money that we've spent on this building. I'd suggest that somebody look into that, because there's certainly something better out there that we could, uh...
You know, I kinda agree. I have a hard time understanding Tanya, uh, because maybe it's the tone of her voice, because then I, and I even wear my hearing aid to this thing, so maybe I need to pick up one of those things again, but it is pretty bad. I mean, trying to, trying to hear every word, you don't need to hear every word, but you need to hear enough words to understand what people are saying. And I, I, I kind of agree with Tom. I don't, we spend, I don't know how much money on this sound system, and it's, it's, it's needs, it needs something. We need to look into it, uh, maybe, and see, see if there's some way we can improve it, some, somehow.
If I've got any time left, I'd also like to ask the attorney a question, the new attorney a question, Mr. Schumaker.
Excuse me, before you do, uh, does the City of Sebring have video as well as...
Yes, they do. And I'm not sure if it's attended. It might just be a camera that's trained on the, uh, on the front of the room that you can see everybody who's gathered there. I mean, we could have a camera back here that would, would, just through arranging the tables, would possibly work. I, but, you know, it, it is video now. And, and I think that just started this year for the City of Sebring, but you can go on the City of Sebring website, and you can watch the video of the last three or four meetings.
But the audio's very clear.
And the audio's very clear. Again, they've got microphones clipped on their collar. And, and they're, they're moving around and talking, and, you know, nobody's playing with their switches, and they're not having to handle, physically handle their microphones. It's, uh, it's pretty common. I mean, group meetings are very common.
Tanya, can we look into that? That, that's a good point, 'cause we've had, we've had problem after problem with this. Maybe we can just, ooh, see what Sebring does.
We can look into it. It, a lot of it depends on the voices of the individuals speaking, but I believe with the audio, like he said, the volume has to be turned all the way up just to hear. I'm not, I, I don't know the issues there, but we can look into it, definitely.
Well, we've had issues as long as I can remember, so maybe...
A lot of it's individual, depending on how close a person holds a microphone to their, their mouth and, uh, you know, whatever.
As a matter of fact, you're too close right now, I think.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Who, who do we...
Last question, last question, uh, Mr. Schumaker. Um, Mr. McClure, um, declined to give any advice to the board about the situation with regard to the charges about the sunshine law. Um, one of the, one of the, um, paragraphs in the attorney agreement is that the attorney will give advice to the board with regard to statutory issues. His, his reason for not giving any advice was that only the state's attorney can investigate a violation of the sunshine law. But many times in the past, he's given advice, or his opinion, about statutory issues. Um, do you share his opinion that he was not, uh, would not, was not appropriate for him to give any advice to this board with regard to the sunshine issue that was charged?
Well, then, as far as giving advice, I don't have a problem giving advice, you know, the, the main thing is, is the law is always open to interpretation. He is correct that the only person that can bring an action for a sunshine law violation is the state's attorney's office. That's who, you know, 'cause that would be, I believe, a criminal investigation, or at least an administrative investigation. So, but, as far as giving, I can, I can give you my opinion on is how the statute reads.
Well, I, I just, it was curious that, uh, Mr. Koji gave advice to the district. He was hired to give advice with regard to, uh, labor law. And he did so, and in his letter of advice, he stated in the letter that he leave, he, he would leave the sunshine, advice regarding the sunshine law to Mr. McClure's expertise, but then Mr. McClure designed, declined to make any statements about that. Question that one might come up in somebody's mind is whether or not he might have had a conflict to give advice to both sides.
I don't know who, who would be the other side.
Well, the other side was the district. Um, I think Mr. McClure was involved in the hiring of Mr. Koji with regard to the employee's complaint. So I just, I just, that, that, that thought occurred, but it's, it's, uh...
Good morning, sir. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I surprise you, I'm not going to take a half an hour that I normally take, so those of you that have to go to the bathroom, get ready, because there'll be a mad rush when I finish. Just one thing, uh, really, and I had not intended to mention this, but there seems to be some misunderstanding about some of this stuff. At our last meeting, there was a motion made and seconded and discussed and all that bit, and with a vote of five to zero, the resolution to close this matter by creating a file, holding all of the documents pertaining to this matter, and considering the case closed, carried. Now, we've had a lot of discussion this morning, and, uh, we've been discussing something that's been over with now for some time. We had a long discussion. Surprisingly, Mr. Coste had a few things to say. I was ashamed to say anything, because I get rather long-winded. But anyhow, we have already acted, and you folks have, and, uh, we need to move on. I think that's a favorite, uh, comment that Rusty has, is to move on. But, um, I just thought you needed to really know that the matter, uh, creating a file, we should, to create, we need to create a file, including all the documents pertaining to this matter, and considering get case closed, carried. Thank you so much.
Rusty Carino, resident over at Turtle Run. Uh, Kurt will take all the trees that they don't want over at Turtle, okay, so no problem. Uh, my problem, uh, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. First of all, how much of a budget do we have here in Sunland Lakes, Tanya? How big is this budget that we're, you're talking about that we're gonna have this coming year?
The current year's $12 million budget for all the funds, current year, yes.
Okay. My next question is, how much, uh, did we spend for a, for Mr. McClure's services last year? And how much is projected, uh, for this year for the, for his, uh, lawyer
I don't have that information in front of me today.
Haven't I?
Eighty thousand.
How much?
Eighty.
Eighty thousand?
Somewhere in the eighty thousand range.
Contract?
Sir, it, it's contracted per hourly rate, but he's asking how much we spent in a fiscal year, and I've said that we...
I thought it was a hundred and eighty thousand.
No.
Yeah?
No. All his fees and services and everything like that, what was the total? Do you know what we spent last year for his services?
Rusty, I'd have to add that up for you.
Okay. Um, what, where I'm coming from is this, is that since we're dealing with about a $12 million budget, and Mr. McClure's services, uh, with the district, I feel like we've been like a stepchild in this particular situation in not getting the full services of an attorney to benefit of an attorney. So I...
Excuse me, Rusty, excuse me, I, I'm sorry to break in, but you asked a question. It's a hundred and forty thousand we spent last, uh...
Okay, a hundred and forty thousand.
That's what we budgeted, but that's, I mean, it came in much lower than that for Mr. McClure's fees.
Okay, that hundred and forty thousand dollars, I think we can get a pretty good attorney for a hundred and forty thousand dollars and 12 million, a million dollar budget, and we have one full-time, one staff to help us out in any cause. Uh, I, for one, was not pleased with the services over the years, as some of you may know, and I think this would give us a great opportunity to explore the pa, the possibilities of having our own attorney here at our disposal, uh, at any time. We wouldn't have to wait back a couple days later to get his assistance. And I think since we're growing and we're running into all kinds of ramifications and so forth, I think we should be looking in this direction. Thank you very much.
Uh, Tanya, that, that line item includes all attorney fees, right? Not just John McClure's, I believe. I, it probably includes, includes all...
Any, any other attorneys that we pay, if we pay Koji, or if we, of course, the attorneys that we're paying on behalf of yourself and Mr. Miller, will also run through that line item. It's a, the budget is a hundred and twenty thousand, and, uh, any, any fees that we pay for Thompson Gonzalez is in another line item.
Okay, like the Ayala thing is on another line item?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Larry Bertetto. Wasn't gonna say anything, but a lot of subject, a lot of information came up that I have to speak on. Uh, number one, I have to agree with whoever talked about the, uh, system. I go home and listen to the, um, um, video, uh, not video, but the sound. I can't understand it. Couple board members are very weak on speaking in the microphone, and I can't hear. Uh, number two, attorney, this is a good time right now, is to maybe we should research and find another attorney. Somebody that would, uh, help us. I disagree with Mr. Rusty on the fact of hiring an attorney here, because then we have to go into a law library and everything that a true lawyer needs, and I don't think we'd put him to that much, uh, we'd get that much benefit, but I think we could certainly hire another attorney. Uh, no offense, but, uh, when the audience has to ask several times our attorney to speak clearly, I don't know if I want that person representing us. Um, we talked about code enforcement. Uh, I guess, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but just the other day, I was going to send Mr. Brumfield another note about the 10-year battle I've had with weeds that are now three foot high across the, from my property. I have to argue with Mr. Brumfield continually. I went to send him a email day before yesterday, and I did it on my computer, as I always do, and it would not be accepted. It said it had to change my browser to a Chrome, Google, before I could send anything to the district. I was also use my internet always to send Mr. Brumfield a note, and now it comes up, I have to change my browser in order to notify the district of the weeds that are now three foot high across from my yard. And of course, this has been an ongoing battle for 10 years. And as, uh, person of security was telling us about, we're gonna change the laws, uh, yeah, how many times does a guy have to be notified in 10 years that the weeds are three foot high? And all the time, we go through the same old thing, well, we gotta give him two weeks, then it's another here, and then they grow up again, and four months later, we have to give him a call, and it goes on and on and on. The only other comment I have is I wanna thank Mr. Halbig and Mr. Miller for their concern about the district. They've gone certainly trying to protect the residents of this district, and appears that sometimes on this board, we've got a couple empty seats.
Back to the board. We're gonna start...
We're going to start the budget conversation. We'll take a 10-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at 10:20.
You went to the body?
Get my leg inside there.
These two microphones? No, we have microphones.
Here's a story I got from Jonathan a couple of days ago, is that the tax clerk, what's his name?
McIntyre.
McIntyre. He has asked if we would be open to a prorated, because he feels that the restaurant is an enterprise and that golf course isn't. So, John thinks that they're going to come and offer us some type of, go between maybe a $10,000 or something like that.
Yeah, but I don't think that part of that is golf course land, and it's not the building that the restaurant is.
I don't know that part, but John said that was the conversation that he had, but he didn't have anything final or nothing.
But I thought that was just the land with the golf course, the rain.
Oh, yeah, but the restaurant sits on top of that land, so, not that that's a part of it. I'm not positive.
I don't know why we can't get a sound system.
Well, we, yeah. In fact, I suggest, I've been in meetings where they have these microphones on a wand that he's talking about, and they had on and off buttons. So, when you wanted to talk, you just push the on button, and then you let it go, and then your mic is dead.
Didn't we have that a week? We did have that.
Before we got this, I suggested, Jonathan, we get headsets.
Wireless headsets can't be that expensive.
But we should put something in our budget for next year, then do that. I don't know what it would be. Hey, Jonathan? Well, the point is, if you put it in the budget, then it gives them, they got to look at it and do something about it. If we had a new sound system, what would it cost? Just a big number.
Fifteen?
Okay, good enough.
We hired some, that was supposed to be the greatest, it's like...
And I can tell you, because I know a lot of, quite a bit about the sound systems, what you have back there is amazing. It's this, you know, inside of it, it's once you have a kind of halter, you know.
Oh, so this is okay?
That's, it's very, it's got, I think, though, that's because that's right on you, it picks your vibration thing, and stuff like that.
I'm going to headset, I'm going to headset to go over there, they just flip over.
That's personal, got to touch in my ear. I don't want to, I don't want to go behind somebody else, and I can give you a name or two.
You don't have to have the microphones on it. Just put it over your head.
Sure, I can just see people.
Who's our communication system?
No, 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 for video and everything.
Right now, it's still passive. He does, he does the audio and video.
Well, we have cameras here, they just, they're all towards up here.
Oh, we're supposed to be getting new cameras, too, which, when the tennis carts are done, you're redoing all the video, aren't you?
Correct, and we have, we have an attention, one, this way, because there's, we want to know what's going on here, we want to know what goes on on this stage.
No, what I was getting at is, like, when, when I was on the board up in Michigan, they had Comcast, and they broadcast our meetings live, so you could turn on at home.
Yeah, but you had to have a Comcast account to do that, right?
Yeah, that's what I was asking whether we let that here.
That capability is, it's all live streaming on the web. It's absolutely, the capability is there. I didn't, I shouldn't tell you a price on that, but the capability is there.
Well, they did that for free.
All right, let's get going. All righty, let's get going here. I guess we'll just start right from the beginning again and go through it again, right? So, on first page, on the golf side, your summary page, you're removing the supervisor's cart of $8,000. I talked to David Bell about that. His cart is 10 years old. I just, I don't see any reason to do that. I think he deserves a new cart. My wife wouldn't drive a cart, it's 10 years old, and I don't know, I just...
Your wife's not on the board.
I understand that. Maybe she is, I don't know. I don't know, I just think, I think that we can, he deserves decent equipment, that's all. And my second comment on there is reconditioned turf tender. I asked David about the warranty on a reconditioned one, did you find anything out on that?
Yes, a, on all used equipment, it's pretty standard that anytime you're buying a used equipment, obviously, you're not going to get a bumper-to-bumper warranty. It would be a 90-day warranty versus a new one, which would be the typical three-year warranty on a new piece of equipment.
To me, the warranty alone would be the $10,000 savings, but, so I certainly don't agree with that either. The other thing I noticed that we need some erosion problems on Turtle Run number five tee box, and Turtle Run 16 green, and Turtle Run 17 tee. Are you going to correct those this year, or do we need to put money in the budget for next year? How are you handling that?
That Gator, Howerton, has been, has been consulted with about, I talked to Tanya about that yesterday, and she said that, I think, Mr. Helbig had the same concern.
I had the same question, I called Gator about it, because a few years ago, I don't know if it was Gator or someone, had brought up the fact that if we don't take care of these banks, we're going to get, it's going to get worse and worse, and it's really looking pretty bad.
Whenever we've...
So, I'm glad you brought it up, because...
Whenever we've had erosion problems in the past, we've always tried to deal with it in-house. You can see where we've, we've put some concrete, some broken-up concrete in some areas to try to stabilize some of the erosion, but there's never been, we haven't ever looked at, from a capital expense project, from a major scale of going out there and doing any of those repairs. But Gator, Howerton is currently looking into it.
Can you give those whole numbers to me again, please?
Turtle Run number five tee, Turtle Run number 16 green, and Turtle Run number 17 tee. And I, the last two are probably somewhat interconnected, I think it's the same pond, but...
Yeah, and there's some on hole 14, 14 by 13 tee, there's several other areas, but...
On one, on one, opposite...
Hole number one, number two, number two, there's that one, there's the one...
Here's a very minor thing, but I was in the restroom on Turtle at 3:00 in the afternoon, and the light is on in the bathroom. I mean, we should put 10-minute timers, switches on all those. I know it's a minor thing, but it's just, we're just increasing my dividends from Duke Energy, so there's no reason for that, I don't think. No, I got one more thing here. I didn't notice in the budget that you are saying we're going to sell this equipment for 15, the used equipment for 15,000 to 20,000, but I don't see where we've captured that money in the budget. I mean, is that something we do or normally don't do, or how do we address that? I know in the past, we've never even mentioned how much we're going to sell the old stuff for, we just sell it and put the money in general fund, I assume, but the fact that we mentioned it, I'm questioning, how did you, what did you do with that money?
It depends if we actually take the equipment to auction, or if we do a trade-in surplus value. In this case, we are doing a trade-in.
Sure. In years past, what we've always done is the equipment gets surplused, and it goes to the auction, and then whatever it sells for the auction, it is what we get. This year, with some of these pieces, I have reached out to some used equipment, these companies that refurbish equipment. I do feel like this particular stuff that we are going to be getting rid of has a little better value than just sending it to the auction. So, there's several companies out there that we can have come in, evaluate the equipment, and then have them give us a price, what they would offer for us, and then obviously, we would take the best price, and just the numbers that I've put together, I'm thinking that it's going to be in that 15,000 to 20,000 dollar range.
Okay.
So, that savings would be offset, I believe, right on the invoice, when they, when they send the invoice, for the new equipment, they would take that salvage value into account, which would make the cost of the, of the equipment less.
So, basically, you would put it in the capital improvement fund, right?
Correct, that's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, the only other thing, does anybody agree with me about the $8,000 or the $10,000? Do we put that back in the budget or not?
I don't have a problem with either one of those back in.
Anybody else?
Well, no, I had a general, I had, I talked to David yesterday when he called and asked about if I had any questions prior to the meeting, and I asked him, in a general sense, not specifically, what could you do without, because, you know, here we are facing a $300,000 subsidy and another $200,000 worth of equipment, and it goes on year in and year out, and year in, year out, and I said, you know, at some point in time, it'd be nice just to say, well, let's give it a rest for a year or two, and then you give me some explanation as to what you think you really have to have, and I don't know if you've thought about it on a general overall basis, and what you can, can and can do without.
Sure. Overall, you know, the fairway unit, that particular mower that's being replaced is very old. We did purchase two other fairway units in 2011, so we do have two newer units that we are currently operating. The rough mowers that are in there, that I would say was probably the number-one thing on the list that we do definitely need. Those mowers would be utilized to mow our Bahia grass areas, and that's one thing that we are struggling with, with the equipment that we currently have, getting during the summer months, keeping up with that, with those areas. So, I would list that as the number-one priority that we definitely do need to have. The top dressers, the top dressers, that's in my, it's in my plan, my five-year equipment replacement plan. Those particular units were up for, to being replaced last year, and we were asked, what could we do without, and that was one thing that we passed on to this year. If we, if we wanted to postpone those particular pieces of equipment for next year, we would need to spend some money on improving them. Hydraulic, or, for instance, last year, right after the budget meeting, one of the units blew a hydraulic line on hole number four tee box last summer. That particular unit does have new hoses on it. I would want to go in and put all new hoses on the other unit. The spinner reel motors, hydraulic motors, would, I would like to replace, so there is going to be some cost that I would need to incur if we did keep those pieces of equipment. The rollers, the rollers also are on the verge of 10 years old. The problem that I'm having with those are the actual roller heads, they've discontinued those, they've upgraded their models, and if I did keep those units, if I needed to buy parts, I cannot buy replacement parts. So, if we wanted to keep those for an extended amount of years, I would need to replace the roller heads on those pieces of equipment. The cost of those to replace that is $5,000 per unit, you know, versus the price of a new one, I wouldn't think that that would be a good route to go, but that's kind of where we're at on each one of those items.
Let me go to the other side of the fence. Go to David Ford, go to page number two. Look at bottom-line revenues. Go from the left column to the second from the right column, you got 600,000. Do you want to tell me why we're having this decline in revenues? We don't seem to have any decline in expenses.
If you look at your, right above your revenue line, in the capital line item, there's a $600,000 difference between the column on the left and the column on the right, and it's all in capital.
I see that, but where does buying capital equipment come in as a revenue? I don't, I don't understand that.
I'll let Tanya explain.
Is that one of these funny accounting things?
Well, yes. It's, it's, the general fund is actually paying for the equipment of the golf fund, so what we do is we show that revenue, we show it as an other source of revenue in the golf fund, because this is golf equipment, so we have to show the revenue there, where it's coming from. So, it's a, it's general fund revenue.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I'm just a simple guy, and I'm very uncomfortable when I see 4.7 going down to 4.1, I don't care what you say, but that's what it is. And in terms of actual golf revenue, forget the transfers, anything like that, do we have a decline? We have a decline, don't we?
No, sir, over the last two years, we've increased by over $200,000. I think it's more than that, but I'm going to be conservative and tell you that our revenues have increased over $200,000.
Well, the restaurant side, I have no problem with, I can follow that very carefully, but...
The golf revenues have increased as well, close to $100,000 in the last two years.
Well, I do know that we've reduced our subsidy, I think, what, about $50,000 this year? So, that's a positive step, but, Tanya, I mean, it's the county business, I'm sorry, but, you know, I look at the bottom line, and the bottom line shows me I'm $600,000 short.
Well, what we did this year is we purchased outright, we purchased golf carts, which we haven't done in the past, normally, that's been a lease, and we've also purchased GPS units in the current budget year.
But how does that count as revenue?
Because the money's coming in from the general fund, it's an other source, I mean, the money's coming into the general fund to pay for that equipment, so that's why, that's, you know, currently, it's much higher this year than it is going to be into the next year because of all those purchases. We made some very large purchases in the golf.
The irony is that we had $925,000 in capital purchase last year, and we're way below that this year, and we show a drop in our revenues.
Well, that's mainly because of those capital purchases. I mean, the revenue sources in the general, I mean, in the golf fund, I mean, you have your golf fees, you have your restaurant, you have your pro shop sales, and then you also have sources from the general fund to pay for this equipment. Those are your main, main sources of revenue that comes into the golf fund.
Would it help me if you did a subtotal on the non-transfer stuff and just see where it is?
I can do that, yes.
That would make it a lot, lot clearer for me. You know, one and one makes two, not one and one makes three. If you could do that, David, can you do that in your accounting? And just give us, you know, forget, forget the transfers, we know about that, but I mean, can we do that as a sub?
I can give you a summary, yes, sir.
Okay. Can it be an ongoing thing in terms of looking at it?
The only time you see this is in the budget.
The only time you see that, that particular, like this, is in the budget, the numbers that I give you on a monthly basis is strictly operational money, because the capital doesn't equate into that, our profit and loss.
But that would give me, that would give me a clearer picture, because what I look for, I'm trying to track, you know, what goes in, what comes out, that type of thing.
Did we have anything in the budget to sod or to sprig or whatever, all the dirt that come out of the pond over on nine?
In the, in that project, there was not anything allocated to sod or sprig the stuff on the left side of nine. We anticipated being able to, the amount of dirt that we were going to spread out, the grass would eventually, would grow back up through that. I did run some rough numbers on what it would cost to sod that whole area, and it's probably going to be an upwards of over $10,000. We can probably seed it for a fraction of that cost, and that's what I've planned on doing.
That makes sense.
Yeah, because a lot of the grass will, well, is going to, is going to come up through there and grow, it's just going to take a little bit of time, but I think between that and then doing the seed coming into the rainy season, I think that's our best avenue.
One other question. We had a big mower that was like 12 or 16-foot wide that we've used in the past, I know last summer it was down for a while. I have not seen that mower for a considerable length of time, is it operational? Is it operational or what happened to it?
It's, it is operational. We have, it's been, we've been, we've been using it, but it's been out there.
I just haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Do we have more equipment now than we did when we, you know, we decided to buy all the equipment?
Uh huh.
And we were leasing it before?
Uh huh.
The whole fleet was being leased. What was that number? The lease number?
The lease number? I want to say, if I remember right, I want to say it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollar lease payment.
And that was yearly?
That was an annual payment, correct?
Hundred and twenty.
Yes.
Maybe we need to go back and look at that again, rather than...
Sure.
And pay a hundred and twenty every year, rather than come back for three hundred thousand every year to replace on this cycle.
That was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you know, over ten years ago.
Yeah.
And, you know...
It might be, it might be a number we want to look at, but it might be something we might want to consider. Not maybe for this budget, but it might be something you might want to look at.
We did, I think Mr. Miller brought up in the last meeting that we wanted to look at, you know, probably some leasing options. I did have some people come down, and I sat down with Tanya. And we did talk through the pros and cons of leasing versus owning or purchasing. You know, it's kind of how you're financially stable, how the operation is, different people. It works better for others depending on your cash flow. Obviously, the district is very financially sound. And, you know, it makes sense to us to, if we can purchase it, you know, that's the cheapest way to do it in the long run. But we can always look at that avenue in the future.
This has nothing to do with the budget, but I know you got your membership drive, if you will, coming up. And I know last year, in the membership policy, there was a dress code in there that I think was very lax, for a better word. I'd like you to take a look at that before you send out contracts. I've had a lot of complaints about visitors being here in tank tops and ugly shorts and whatever else you can think of, gym shorts and stuff. And I think we need a dress code here. We're trying to build this golf course, this community, to be a cut above the rest. And I just think you need to take a look at it, that's all.
Anytime that someone comes in in a tank top or a tee shirt, we try and get them in a collared shirt in the golf shop. That's to go out and play golf. Other than, you know, other than that, you know, controlling what happens on the driving range with people coming in in blue jeans or a tee shirt to hit on the driving range, or even coming in the restaurant...
I have no problem with that. I'm just talking about the golf course.
On the golf course, you know, most of the time, we try and get people in a collared shirt. Sometimes, you know, they do get by, and sometimes we miss it. But for the most part, we definitely, we try not to get them, let them go out on the golf course in blue jeans and/or tee shirts. In the summertime...
When you say try, do you say you can't play or buy a shirt, or what do you say?
When the people, when our staff talks to the person, you know, about it, they, we make them, you know, either put on a shirt, change their shirt to go out and play golf. Now, I would admit, there are times that we miss it. And late, especially in the summertime, late in the afternoon, sometimes we will miss it. That's something that, on our part, we can do a better policing job.
Okay.
But, you know, it's very difficult when the entire, you know, when you're only talking about one area being the golf course, when they're out there that we're going to enforce, you know, a dress code, and then the rest of the property, you can dress how you, you know, as long as you're not running around in your birthday suit, you know, you're okay. So, you know, I'm just, you know...
Well, I'm saying, if you go in the restaurant, you go in the restaurant.
Right.
If you go to play golf, you got to come in the pro shop and buy a green fee. So you know what they're doing. If they go in the driving range, you got to come in and buy a token, or don't even come in and get a token over there. So I don't know why it's so hard to control.
We will definitely relook at the, at the dress code for the golf course. And then, you know, we'll do a better job of policing that in the golf shop.
Making a comment. All right, let's keep going here. So anybody in favor of giving David Bell a golf cart or not?
Yes, sir.
I guess not. Two, yeah?
Yeah.
Three ups. He got three ups already, so... And what about the buying a new or reconditioned turf tender? I'm in favor of getting a new one.
Likewise.
I go along with that.
Okay. Put those two back in. Page one, any comments? Page two, any comments? Page three? And page four? Page five?
I had a question on whether or not we really need those canopy shades. That's a lot of money, forty thousand dollars for the shades. And Tanya said that we might get some reimbursement for that, for... Is that where we're at?
No, we're in the golf. You're in the wrong one. Go back to golf.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I was looking for something and I forgot to flip back. Forget it. Forget it.
All right. Okay, we're on page six here.
Wait a minute.
Well, that's why I'm going page by page. That's what I was doing.
I did have something lined up on page five.
Page five? Okay, go back to page five.
The management travel, corporate staff, we're still paying for that?
Yeah, that's in the contract.
I apologize. I missed your question.
That's all right. Management travel, corporate staff.
Yes, sir. That was part, from what I understand, that was part of the contract. It is three thousand dollars a year.
It is.
It is? Okay.
I got a question.
Okay.
On...
What page?
Wait a minute. On page four, you got cell phone, twelve hundred hours. Page five, you got cell phones, twelve hundred dollars. Page six, you got cell phones, three thousand dollars. Why do we have so many cell phones?
Those are management positions and department heads, and they are reimbursed their cellphone usage at a hundred dollars per. So those cell phones are reimbursed to David Bell, Megan Bell, Andy Kessling, Kevin Heim, and the two superintendents on the golf courses. And the two superintendents on the golf courses, I believe, are at...
Are they at fifty?
One's at a hundred, one's at fifty. They changed them.
Yeah. One's at a hundred and one's at fifty. And as of last year, going forward, any new employee or new department head that comes on board, their cellphone will be reimbursed at fifty dollars.
Twelve hundred dollars would be one employee, just so you understand the number.
Yeah. Well, you keep going. Every page has got twelve hundred dollars on it.
Well, it's one...
Except for one.
That's one employee in that department.
I don't know why we have so many cell phones.
Well, we don't. That's what I'm trying to tell you. There's one, on page four, there's one cellphone.
Yeah.
Page five, there's one cellphone. And on page six, that would be two and a half cell phones, basically.
Basically, yeah.
Because one's fifty bucks instead of a hundred bucks. So that's what? Four, five? Five phones.
Yeah.
I agree with you. It's too much money, but it's part of the...
Golf course maintenance expense.
Yeah. Yeah. David Bell's got one, and the two, what do you call them? Supervisors? Two supervisors have. All right, on page six, I got some questions. Three years ago, I thought we started this program of doing Bahia sodding on the golf course, nine holes per year. So we're in the third year now. So I would assume that Turtle Run is done, and we should be doing nine holes on deer by now. And I find out we're not even done with Turtle yet. So I'm a little confused about, we gave you the money, so why didn't you do it, I guess?
Two years ago, we did. I did present the Bahia grass project. I ran numbers last year, whenever we were going through that project. In the middle of the project, I did underestimate the numbers that I presented. Whenever we were doing the project, whenever we got to our budgeted number, you know, we stopped it. That got us, you know, roughly five to six holes done on the front nine. Instead of continuing on and being over budget, you know, we stayed, we stopped at that point. The money that was in the, that's in this current year's budget, the twenty thousand dollars in sod, a lot of that sod is going to be used for turf improvement on deer run during the renovations, and some on Turtle Run. The money that's, that we have in this current year's, or in this proposed budget, is another twenty thousand dollars that we'll continue to do the Bahia grass as far as it will get us.
Yeah, but you already said that twenty thousand doesn't do nine holes. So why wouldn't you put thirty or forty thousand, or whatever the number is, in there to get the project done?
I mean, the twenty thousand dollars has been a, it's been a good working number with our expenses and revenues, and not trying to just to raise expenses to, you know, it's been a, it's been a good number to work with. I mean, we...
I mean, as we go through that project, you know, when we were doing the front nine of Turtle Run, as Dave was going around and putting the areas that he was going to make Bahia grass originally, when he went around, he didn't think that he was going to need to use that much sod. And then as he was doing it, the areas grew. Because, you know, okay, we need to put some here, we need to put some, you know, in different places. The same thing is going to happen when we go to the back nine and when we go to deer run. We're going to go around and we're going to try and do this. We can overestimate, but overestimating, I think, you know, what we've been getting, as Dave has said, what we've been getting has been giving us a good amount of sod. We're able to get the work done in the summertime. Yes, it's a slower process, but it's one that we will get through eventually. If it's a quicker process, then obviously, the numbers are going to, I believe, would have to go up. And I'll, you know, that's Dave's expertise, area of expertise. But it would have to go up because we would have to have more labor. And then obviously, you know, we would have to have a bigger budget for the sod.
To me, that's one of the most wasteful areas that you have in the whole program. I don't know how much we spent on sod that just dies, because it's not watered or what. But particularly along the cart paths, when we plug in the sod and then just watch it die. How much of this sod has died?
I would say none of this. This is the Bahia, what we're talking about only.
No, the Bahia grass, the Bahia grass, we haven't had any new shoot with Bahia grass.
I think you need to pay attention to that, because what's the point of sodding if it just disappears in a few weeks? And it does that along the cart paths particularly. Maybe you're okay on that, but how do we counter that, David?
I mean, I would say that along the cart path areas, when we put that sod in there, the reason that there's a need for sod in those areas is traffic. You know, we have seventy-seven thousand rounds that go around the golf course.
I'm not questioning the need, I'm questioning the results. We go back and back and back and back on that stuff.
Again, it all boils down to the traffic. And as we're doing this cart path project, we're widening our cart paths, we're putting curbs in a lot of areas, that's going to help with that. Because, you know, on Turtle Run, it's helped in a lot of those areas. Now, we still have some traffic issues on Turtle Run, but it's not near what it was before we did the cart path project. I think you'll see a similar solution on Deer Run.
What Dick's talking about is after you've put it all in, they come back and they sod along that curbing. And then in a week or two, it's all dead. What they don't do is they don't water it. What they need to do is they have to go out there and take that tanker that they've been using to water all those trees, and every day or two, go along and water that damn grass so that it doesn't die.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Point taken.
We talked, we talked about sod. What's this seed? Seed, agro seed? That's a big number.
Ooh, I want to talk about that.
Huh?
I want to talk about that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I do that?
That is a...
I'm sorry, you mean to jump in.
No, you're fine.
That is the number to purchase our oversea.
I, I talked with David Ford. I said, this overseeding, to me, David Bell's told me that it's bad for the golf course. It physically hurts the grass by overseeding. So I said, so why do we do it? We tried it on Turtle Run. It seems to be working. So why are we overseeding Deer Run? That's because the northerners like it. And I said, well, fine, okay. How much would we save if we didn't oversea? And the number Mr. Ford gave me was seventy-five thousand dollars we would save in terms of labor, gas, equipment, and seed if we didn't oversea. Now, is that number somewhat right?
Somewhat.
Okay, that's fine.
It may be an overestimate, but...
That's fine.
It is going to be substantial.
It's going to be north of fifty thousand. We'll put it, give you that much. So why are we doing it? It's not good for the golf course. Why do we do it? I just, I mean, we're trying to save money.
From a standpoint of our northern members that come down, and the seasonal, seasonality of our business, that's what the expectation is of the people that come to Sun 'n' Light.
Well, if that's the case, then we should be overseeding Turtle then. I mean, if that's your objective, then you're hurting business by not overseaing Turtle. To me, and it's just not right.
Some of the, you know, on Turtle Run, again, you know, for years, it has been overseeded. And when you would go through that transition period, Turtle Run would probably, at this point today, still not have grass in a lot of those fairways compared to past. And now we do. So, you know, taking a break for a little while, switching back and forth, those are all options that we can put on the table. You know, I believe that having one overseeded and one not is a good option. I think Turtle Run is responding very well. I think it's going to be in great condition come the season. And having one overseeded, to have those tournaments on, to, that our seasonal members and people like that that come down, it makes sense to me. Now, I could be, I could be wrong, and, you know, we'll do what we, what the board thinks is best for the, for the club.
Well, what's, what's the bottom line on this? I mean, Kurt's got a good point. You say Turtle Run is okay now, but what are we, a year or so, almost two years into that?
We're just, we're a year into it. This is our first, this is our first growing season with not having it overseeded.
Yeah. Are you saying that it's responding well?
Yes.
Are you saying we have grass all over the place?
Well, there's still some areas that are, that are, that are thin, but...
Are they thin for what? Just they need to...
For various reasons. I mean, for, if you was, if, in years past, the condition that we're in right now versus this time after we would have been overseeded, we're very, we're much further along than we would have been, from a transition standpoint.
Could we expect the same on Deer? That we don't oversea?
Deer Run, Deer Run has always transitioned a lot better than Turtle Run has because of the age of the course and the soil structure of the course is a lot heavier soil, and the Bermuda grass that's there is healthier. Anytime, the healthier the grass is going in to oversea, the healthier it's going to be coming out of oversea. The problem on Turtle is it's a much sandier soil, and we've always, we've struggled getting it, a base establishment of a solid, healthy turf, you know, and then... a base establishment of a solid, healthy turf, you know, and then whenever we overseed over the top of it, you're coming out of it weaker and then you go all summer long trying to, you know, trying to get it to grow in and then you seed it. It's just, it's a never-ending process. And by not overseeding this last year, you know, we've, we're getting healthier and next year's going to be even, even better.
So my recommendation is let's try it one year on Deer and see what you get.
Oh, I don't know. Deer recovered better this year than I've ever seen it recover.
Deer always transitions better.
I don't know, I don't know what kind of good faith loss we're going to have by not having an overseeded...overseeded, you know, people don't, they want to play on green grass. They don't want to play on...
Well, we got paint for that.
Yeah, we got a little disagreement.
We painted Turtle last year. We can paint Deer this year.
You know, in the golf industry, you know, in a seasonal market, you know, you make all your money during season, so you want to have, you know, your best conditions during season. And going back 10 years ago, whenever we first came in, you know, the courses weren't very good and to make money during season, you needed to have something to play on and that's why they would overseed.
Well, I don't agree with it.
Should have overseed Turtle and not overseed.
Yeah.
What you're saying about the grass, does that sound...
I don't, I just think we're wasting money here.
I would have just a recommendation. You know, based on the member comments over the season and the condition that Turtle Run was in, my recommendation would be is that we go ahead and oversee Deer Run. If Turtle Run, it turns out, you know, everything is fine, we're painting it, the golf course is in great condition, and, you know, we don't hear those member complaints again, then Deer Run next year, we can not overseed and we can move forward on that schedule.
Well, you just said that Deer Run is in better shape, so you shouldn't have any member comments if it's in such great shape.
I would just say that member comments would just come from the fact that we're going to get ready to tell them, we're not overseeding at all and they already had a bad...had a rough season last year on Turtle Run. They would probably assume, they would not be right, but they would assume that Deer Run would be the same as Turtle and they may not, I'm not going to say they're not going to join because that's not the case, but they, you know, we would hear those comments. And I would, I would just say you give it, you give it a year, let's get through the test on Turtle Run and then if it turns out great, then we just, you know, we move on to Deer Run.
I don't agree with you, but...all right.
Well, whether we agree or not, probably these two guys know a lot more about it than what we do.
Yeah, both of them are telling me we're hurting Deer Run by overseeding it. They're telling me that. Long-term, it's the worst thing we could do to the golf course. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, that's correct.
Yeah, so we're doing it for cosmetic reasons strictly.
From a turf, from a turf health and quality, it's better for the Bermuda grass not to be overseeded.
Thank you. I mean, you could take that $50,000 and get your Bahia project up and running again and get on schedule.
If we say that and we just go on and ignore that comment, I mean, that's important, you know, you've said very clearly, it's going to hurt the course eventually, right? So why are we doing it?
We do not have to do it and I mean...
Why are we even proposing it?
Again, we're proposing it because of the issues that we ran into last year with Turtle Run because Turtle Run's first year out of the gate not overseeding. Obviously, you all played golf last year. You all heard the member comments. So, you know, that is why we're saying, let's oversee Deer one more year. And then once we get through the Turtle Run and our members come back this year, see the difference in Turtle Run than what it was last year, then the Deer Run project will create no issues and no waves. It'll be done. So, a year from now, we will save that money. Again, that's just my recommendation, you know, the board's pleasure is what we will do and I believe that you'll be better for in the future, but I think one more year's not going to hurt either.
All right. You win.
You want to bookmark that comment, however?
I say save the money now.
I agree with the expert. I mean, I really have to agree with the expert because I think it's really going to hurt us as far as good faith, not having a golf course that's overseeded. I really do. I think it looks better. I think it plays better.
I could flip that around and say, he's punishing us year-round members because...
Right.
Just to satisfy some other members.
The members that get affected from it are the...
There's arguments both ways.
I didn't say that. What did you say?
The members that get affected from it are the year-round members.
Exactly.
The ones that are here from the, that are here during the summertime are the ones that get affected from the courses being overseeded. The one, the snowbirds, they don't, it doesn't affect them, so they want it to be overseeded because they want that.
Oh, sure. I want to drive a Cadillac too, but I don't.
By the...
You're going to afford one.
Maybe so.
Speaking of member complaints, you sent us that letter from this guy. Has that been resolved or one way or the other? What's happening with that?
Yes, sir. I mean, it's done. Basically, the letter that I sent you and my response was, the answer was no, he was not going to get his refund.
Okay, so that's the end of that then, right?
Is, I just, the reason I sent it to you was informational so that if he did reach out to you, which he told me he would, that you would know what's going on.
Okay.
I got a firsthand because I played with him a few days right before he sent the letter. He hates Turtle Run, but...
That's fine.
You know, he just, he does. And I, you know, as a matter of fact, I've had a discussion with you guys about our local rule that we waived. Now, I'd like to see that looked at at some point, but anyway.
All right, so are we doing the overseeding and not overseeding or we want to take a consensus vote here? What do we want to do? You want to comment?
I say we don't overseed.
I think we should overseed one of the court, at least one of them.
Time for overseeding this year.
All right, you guys win. Heck with it.
What?
I said, fine, we'll do it one more year. Page seven, anybody got anything?
$1,000 we can save.
All right. Page seven. Anything there? Page eight. Oh, I already took care of that.
Sales and marketing expense. I have one comment on page nine. The water stations. Are we buying a good enough ice machine that they're holding up? It seems like especially the one at the clubhouse, ice machines are notorious to be high maintenance. Are we, is the one at the clubhouse a good enough machine to eliminate any of that maintenance or are we, or what's this? Give me a little rundown of this.
The ice machine, the ice machine at the clubhouse, obviously, is not in very good condition. We need a new one. I have a quote for that. I was waiting on a cabinet quote, so, which I have now. I got this past week. So, and I'll bring that back to the board at the appropriate time. I haven't had time to put anything together on that. The ice machines that will be on the golf course would be similar to that particular ice machine. That ice machine at the clubhouse has been there for...
Since, yeah, five years.
It's been there for five years.
It's a life of it.
Yep, I mean, that's pretty much, it's what you're going to get out of it. You know, depending on what breaks on them, you know, the repairs can be minimal. Basically, what Mr. Palmer's told me, the ice machine at the clubhouse, the repair's not worth it. Let's just go ahead and get a new one. Most of the time, he can make small repairs and get them fixed. So, you know, for the most part, they do a very good job. I know that the one on Turtle Run, you know, has some issues with the heat and I've talked to John Palmer about that. He just, you know, he can come out and take a look at it for us, but at the end of the day, you know, it gets hot and, you know, we run out of ice or the water that comes out sometimes is hot, but you just have to hold the button down until it gets cold.
That's the one at the clubhouse you're talking about?
No.
Oh, I'm 14. I noticed those little ice cubes, they melt real quickly. Couldn't we get bigger cubes that would not melt so fast?
That was the, basically, the bid that I got was on a bigger cube.
Okay, good. All right, anything else on golf? I guess we're through that. Anybody else got anything on golf? Okay. We'll go on to the general fund then. Under community service, first page there, you got $30,000 in the budget for marketing. I would think that because the golf course is doing a lot of marketing, that instead of putting it all into your category, that would put half in yours and half in the golf side so that the golf people have more money to market, do their internet marketing and stuff like that, which we've kind of approved the 30 grand for, is to kind of build our email base and our contact with people in the northern states. So I guess I'm just proposing that we not reduce or increase the money, but just maybe split it between the golf course and the...because you guys kind of work together, don't you? But still, he might want to run promotions on golf packages or something like that and this would just give you more money to do that. I don't know what it would do to you by taking away 15,000, but I'm just suggesting something like that. What do you got?
I don't think it would do, it would make much of a difference, quite honestly, because we do work together on out-of-area advertising is what that budget pays for essentially. So if Dave focused on, you know, out-of-area in Florida and I focused up out-of-area in out-of-Florida, then it probably wouldn't make much of a difference.
Doesn't matter then, huh? Okay.
Let's wait, like, have a...give me the bottom line on this because this outfit we're going with, I guess we are, Visit Florida, are we going with them?
Wait, wait a minute, I got to make a comment. We aren't going with them, that's just a proposal, right?
That was just an idea that we have. Dave and I are actually going to a conference, the Governor's Tourism Conference in August, and that is one of the websites that they function out of. And I have experience with using Visit Florida when I worked with the Kenilworth Lodge and it was very successful. Of course, that was eight years ago and things have kind of turned digitally versus putting brochures and such at rest areas. So, that was just one of the things that we, you know, thought might work for us. It's definitely not the way we have to go, but we want to go to this conference too to see what kind of things it has to offer.
Well, the other comment I wanted to make was that Billy Casper is, told me that when it's the appropriate time, they want to come in and make a presentation for marketing as well, within this realm of the 30 grand. I don't know what they can do for 30 grand, but anyway, that's, just wanted to throw that out so that obviously you know that they're not locked into this Visit Florida thing.
Whether or not we're locked into that, I just have some questions. As to, we're trying to grow the community and from what I read with this, this is sort of a, you know, come look and see and, you know, you'll be excited and stuff like that. We don't have those facilities to sort of pursue that type situation because these golf villas are still down the road. So, what really do you expect to get out of, let's forget the Visit Florida, but just, what do we expect to get out of the enhanced website and so forth contacts? Are we putting in anything into place here that will process that?
You mean regards to when they come here? What are we, what are we doing with them?
Yeah, yeah. What are we...
Well, whenever they are interested in booking a package that we've promoted, say on Facebook, the Facebook campaign that we just did, Dave and I are going to come up with a game plan where I am going to show them around the community, like they have to take some time to show them around the community, kind of, I don't want to say like they do with the time share, but we want to introduce them to Sun 'n Lake and that's the thought process we have in getting them here and capturing their attention while they're here. That's what we would like to do.
How do we accommodate packages?
I know Dave has worked out a, some deals with a couple hotels, local hotels, and he booked one for, what, November?
We booked one for November, a group of 24 that are coming down in November and that was off of the face, the campaign in the Midwest. They're from Wisconsin.
When you say coming down, you've got 24 people, what, is that our package? Is that a Sun 'n Lake situation or what is that?
That is a Sun 'n Lake situation. That is...
Where are we going to put them up?
They'll be put up at, in on the lakes.
In the lakes. And what is our role then?
Basically, our role is that we, you know, we booked the hotel, we get them here on the golf course and then, you know, you know, treat them to a really good time. And then Tenille has the opportunity to take them around to the community and show them what Sun 'n Lake has to offer.
A big part of this, Tenille, is enhancing our image via the internet and so forth, is that right?
Yes.
And you'd mentioned we're redoing our website?
Yes.
And are we going to, are we going to get some particulars on that? How are we going to do that?
Yeah, I had, I sent out an email Tuesday or Wednesday with the two companies that sent in their bids, that I narrowed it down to essentially between the three companies that sent in bids. And I believe both companies would do a great job. If you go in and look at the examples of work that they've done, I think that you'll see that they cater to a community, but they also cater to the drawing people here, like, you know, St. Augustine, for example. One of the companies is doing St. Augustine. They're very tourist-based so that they get people, they get people there. And that's kind of the approach that we're taking with us.
When do we make a decision on who we want to use?
We're going to bring it back to the August 21st meeting.
Recreational services restroom facilities for Racquet Club and Recreation Complex. Personally, I don't like any of them myself, but I think they're all like, I like, what happened to Dave Halbig's idea about the trailer thing?
There was, there was one example of a trailer that was within the packet and Dave had actually gone out and requested further quotes, as they do have to be ADA approved. So what you have in front of you are some additional options for different trailers. Now, one thing to keep in mind with the trailers and any restroom we put in, in talking with the utility department, the only location that we can really do it in is going to be in the front of the tennis courts, given where the water and the sewer lines are. That's going to be the most, I should say, cost-effective place to put them.
But you mean, not smack dab in front, but over in the trees?
Over in the trees, yes. There's a nice clearing already right in the tree. We may have to take out a couple. I believe there is included in the packet, a Google Earth, page 31, of where I proposed placing it.
Yeah, I saw that. But I'm absolutely against a trailer. We had trailers here when we were doing this clubhouse thing and it, you know, what can I say? It looks cheap. And I'll direct your attention to page 20, example B, not the finishing, but just the idea of...
Page 20.
Well, I've got 20 down here. I don't know, it's example B. It's the one with the lighted, one, I mean, yeah.
Cedar one?
No, the next one. No.
Now, keep in mind too, with these examples I offered, these come in a variety. I mean, we can design them in different colors and different, you know, finishes. These are just examples of two-stall units that they have completed.
I think two stalls is appropriate. I think two stalls is appropriate, but right at the back, you have it tucked in the back, there's a $67,000 price tag for proposal. Does that relate to?
That's if you construct it, if we were to hire someone just to construct a building.
Okay, okay, so as opposed to?
As opposed to doing the prefab, the prefabricated building.
And that has got the hookups with it, that's hooked into the thing in most cases. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, that did not include us putting in the lines and, and it does have, it does have that, yeah. Which, which that's going to be probably about, you know, between $3,000 and $5,000 for us, for us to put the lines in and the tank and everything with the sewer and the water.
So what's the price tag on this?
On this particular one?
Again, I'm not talking about the finishing, but just the concept, which is a fairly nicely in concept, if you like bathrooms.
It's 28,000 to 33,000, just for the materials to build the building.
So you'd have to double that for labor, probably.
And then you, then you have to put the?
Hookups.
Hookups in it.
So you got 60,000, 70s?
My comment on it is?
I just got a problem spending that kind of money for a bathroom for the tennis courts that are going to be used so seldom that you probably, if you did have a trailer, you'd have to pump it once a month, maybe. I just, I just, I personally can't see it myself.
My comment is that I would like to see it built right on the front of the tennis courts where you go into them, so that you walk in, the outside door of a block building, it's a security to it, you have to use your card to get into it, that eliminates outside people from tearing it up. You walk into it, there's a ladies' bathroom on one side, a men's on the other. If you want a small office in it, or a place for storage, you would have it. You walk out the back of it, you walk into the tennis courts. Now, we're talking a building that should be there for 30 years, you start depreciating that out over 30 years, and, yeah, it's money to spend, but it would make a nice-looking facility, and I think a benefit, we've already spent a fortune on the tennis courts, let's fix them like we want them, instead of halfway doing it.
Well, firstly, I don't agree with having an office over there. If you want to have a sales center, the district office needs to be refurbished. In my opinion, just tear the damn thing down, it's in bad shape anyway, and build a new one, and incorporate a sales center in the district center, because you got the people there that can do the whole program. So putting an office over there, to me, is just a waste of money, and first of all, it doesn't give you a good first impression of Sun and Lake. I mean, you're going to move here from out of state, and oh, you got a 12-foot by 12-foot office, is this what you have? I mean, it's not very impressive.
Take the offices out of it, just make a concrete building that you go through to get into the tennis courts, but you have to have a pass to get in it.
Yeah, but if somebody's using the bathroom, then how do you get in the tennis courts?
No, I'm talking, it's got to have a hallway to get into it.
Well, why don't you, if you, whatever you do, build a building or put in a trailer, why don't you put it in the back, in the trees there where the recreation or the rest area is, and have the doors facing the tennis courts? So the only way you're going to use those bathrooms is if you're playing tennis or pickleball, period. And you don't have to lock the doors. You got to be inside the tennis courts to use it.
Do you have utility access to the place that Kurt's recommending?
ADA.
Because that was my thought too, but.
That's the problem, is John Martinez has looked very closely at that, and that would not be a great location to place.
From what standpoint?
From mostly the sewage standpoint.
But in the trees in front?
Yes, because the line is at the street, essentially.
That's not a recommended location. We're recommending in the front.
Yeah, okay, but I disagree with my colleague here about putting it smack dab in front if we're not going to do anything else. So let's put it in the trees. But let's make it decent, I mean, you get a trailer, you equate that, pardon me, David, but you equate that to the recycle bins, I mean, look at that trash.
Dick, wouldn't you want it attached right to what we have now?
No, not particularly. I had hoped that we would, we would have a multi-purpose facility, and that's been knocked down, so I don't see putting a bathroom in front of your tennis courts enhances anything, but where in the trees, if you look there, it's off to the side, and it's non, should I say, non-invasive, I guess. But, but I think we need, your point about the fact that we spent this money on tennis court, and we're building something that's going to last for a while, I certainly agree with that.
I want something that lasts, and I want a card system on the thing to get into it. There's no sense in putting it out there and just having it shore up.
That is definitely an option, but as far as the requesting of reimbursement from our PAC, I would not be able to do so. It would not be a public facility, it would be a, more of a private facility, but that's okay, if that's what the board desires.
So if we put a card system on it, it would not, we could not get 50% of it back, correct?
To me, it constitutes as more of a private, it's not an open-to-the-public restroom, it is a private facility for tennis and pickleball players.
And you got, it's got to be ADA, I found that out, it's got to be ADA-conforming.
Yes.
Irregardless where it's at, it's got to be ADA-conforming.
Correct, yes.
Well, the one diagram you showed, it is, that Example B is.
All of them are, basically.
Yes, all the examples.
Yeah, fair ground level, yeah.
And one thing to consider in thinking about restrooms, is we know that the membership is going to continue to grow based on feedback we've received. People are very anxious for the courts to reopen, and I think you're going to find that when season comes back into play, those courts are going to be used more and more, because we will have the nicest facility in the area. And hearing, hearing the complaints from the players that there's no restroom facilities, that it is an inconvenience for them to have to walk all the way to the clubhouse, that those complaints we get are going to continue to grow, because membership is going to continue to grow.
Well, I don't think there's any issue with having a bathroom there, it's just a matter of what we're going to do. I think that's more the issue.
Yeah, but Larry's, Larry's point is well-taken. You know, we toss around 40, 50,000 in golf like it's nothing, and here we're talking about something that's badly, that will be badly needed, and we're moaning about this out of the other thing. If we're going to do it, I agree with Larry, let's do it right. Doesn't have to be a Taj Mahal, but, you know, and the setting off to the side there in the front, in those trees, is acceptable to me, particularly when you talk about your connections and so forth.
Yeah, but what's it going to cost? Yeah, that, I.
You talking behind the dumpsters there, that, those trees?
Yeah, those trees.
Oh.
Yeah, there's a, there's actually, if you go over there, there's a nice, there's almost a nice, perfect clearing where a building would sit. We might have to take out a couple palm trees, but, and what will save us money too, even doing the prefabricated, going that route, is we can do a lot of the work ourselves.
Who's going to do that? We just fire that guy.
Mike, come here.
I went over with John, John Martinez. Okay, in a past life, I was, I did this for a living, okay? I built bathrooms, I built roads, I did everything. We do need a bathroom, okay? We need a permanent bathroom, okay? We need a permanent bathroom, we need something that's done right. I went up with John Martinez, and John and I walked the whole project. They can do a lot of the work in-house here to save money. I think we have to put something permanent. I've been on duty, I've rode around the building, and it, I mean, the tennis courts, and there's actually people standing at the fences, peeing out the fence.
We agree with all that.
Well, I'm just telling you, and you've got kids walking around, you've got women walking around, people are complaining, people complain that they have to go to the restaurant. I agree with Larry, probably the first time in my life I ever agree with Larry, but we do need something permanent and something to look good. Portable bathrooms are not going to work there, we're going to have vandalism, number one. The kids will be over there, if we put portable potties, they're going to be knocking them over. For, I think that we can do the project somewhere around $50,000 and do it right, put a little, maybe, storage, maybe not an office, Kurt, but maybe a little storage behind it. I really think that we should, you know, if we're going to spend that much money, let's do it right the first time. Thanks.
Yeah, but money-wise, you're just talking money. If you're going to do in-house labor, that means that labor isn't doing another job that they are supposed to be doing, so it still costs money.
I asked John that question, I said, John, is it going to take, is it going to take away from your daily work? And he said, two or three days worth of work, and that's it. The other, the?
They can build that in three days.
No, 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 no.
Water and sewer.
The connections.
The connections. The other plus, the other plus with doing it in-house, is these guys are going to know where all the shut-offs, the cleanouts and everything.
You're only talking about the hookups, we're talking about the construction of it. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
The construction or the hookups?
No, all the hookups. The concrete pad is going to have to be subbed out, the plumbing will have to be subbed out.
Well, this trailer that Allison just handed us, that's 47,500 right there, and you got a trailer.
Well, that's a little overkill, that trailer.
There's two prices, there's a $30,000 one too.
There's a, in the back.
And you get a three-staller, air-conditioned.
But this is here for 30 years.
With hot water.
If I want to live in a trailer park, then I'll get a trailer. Well, let's get a number, let's put a number on the daygone thing, and let's see what the heck we got, but.
Well.
As a recommendation, what we could do is, right now, the budget's at 150,000, why don't we cut that number in half for right, for budget purposes, and we can, we can discuss this at a workshop, we can discuss it individually as we go. I mean, I know it doesn't have to be decided today, but I know that the 150,000 is definitely not what the board supports at this time.
That's only for the one on tennis court.
Correct, this is the tennis court, yes.
We ought to be able to come up with a little investigation, we ought to be able to come up with a fairly firm number.
Yeah, I would think.
If we specify what we want, to me.
Exactly.
26,000.
To me, looking at that building that we have up on the screen, I think you'll agree, that's a nice-looking facility.
It is, and if you've been to Highlands Hammock State Park, behind the playground facilities there.
Pay attention, Chris.
That's exactly what it looks like, very, very similar, nice, with the rooftop in it, it looks very similar to this picture. This is Highlands Hammock State Park, has a very similar restroom to this.
That's got, Larry, I think that's prefab with the facing on it, which you can do in any of these buildings, so.
You can get it, any, you can do it frame or block, either, you can request either way.
Tanya, I got to believe that we're going to get rid of those recycle bins, aren't we?
We are, but I tell you what we did do, we did contact the county, because I was wanting a confirmation of a date that they were going to introduce their curbside recycling, and they could not provide us a date. Cannot provide us a date.
Are we stuck with these things until that comes about?
Dick, I'm going to, I'm going to look into another location. I've talked a little bit about the zoning of a certain area, I've talked with Del Post, Paulson, and Gator regarding a few ideas, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I was hoping that the recycling program would move forward, and we could actually remove those bins from that area, but it doesn't look like they're, they can give us a date yet on the curbside program.
Well, if that goes away, the EMS, we could be waiting for another 20 years.
Let me ask a question on these, this prefab thing, is this a, is this a package deal, a prefab packaged bathroom plan?
They send you everything you need, like, all the parts.
It's like a Morgan building-type thing, or, I mean?
They send you all the parts that you need to construct the building, inside and out.
Okay.
You say there's one of those at Hammock State Park.
It looks similar, I don't know if it's a prefabricated-type facility, but it's a very similar look.
Where's that?
She said it's at Hammock State Park.
There was, there was another company that I contacted, and looking further, I understood why there was such a huge price difference, but it was versus, you know, them coming and installing versus just sending the materials. And those, that price was somewhere between 60,000 to 80,000 for different units.
My concerns with it is, when you get into a prefab, and maybe the inside part of those, I know are fiberglass, now you get in, and you've got it open to the public, now it's perfect to take your knife and carve your name, and your girlfriend's name, and whatever in the walls.
I don't believe in, I don't care if we get a rebate or not, unless you're not being open to the public where it's set. Anyway.
It can be for members only. Yeah.
So we'll talk the money when we get to that point in the budget.
Okay, sounds good.
Anybody else got any comments on summary page one, two, or three? No?
Well, we are going to talk about this proposed code enforcement.
The other thing is the recreation complex, complex restrooms that we had suggested putting in with a storage facility.
I thought we'd just talk about that when we get to the dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You got something else to add right now?
Nope.
All right, page one. See, this is my third budget.
This is my third budget rodeo here, and seems like every time we get to the budget, this page, we just kind of skip over it. We don't do anything here. But if you look at page one, total operating revenues is 3,776,000, total expenses, which is the bottom line, is 6,270,000. So we have a shortfall in revenue of 2.2 million dollars. Now, if you, I would agree that 3.7 million probably takes care of day-to-day business. I mean, if we're just running this district and we're not really doing anything, improving or whatever, yeah, we can get along with that fine. But probably in the next five years, we're going to need to build a new district office, we're going to need another pool, we'll probably need another community center, we're looking or thinking about short-term leases in condos, golf packages, clubhouse renovation, and all this property that's coming up through the county, I would assume if the price is right, and we can write the right deal, we're going to want to buy these properties back, or get them back for free, so we need money for land acquisition. My point is that if you look at unimproved lots, which is what the county's taking hundreds of, and it'll be thousands before it's probably all done, there are 2,041 lots east of Cortez and 1,695 lots west of Cortez, and we have a total of, let me get the number here, four, 8,861 vacant lots. If you, my point is, is right now we charge $294 for a vacant lot. If you raise that 50 dollars a year, so when these lots get recycled back into the community again, or back into the building phase, if you will, if that price is 344 or 294, that means nothing to the new buyers of the new people. Our collection rate on those lots is 27%. So basically, you're talking about 400,000 dollars a year by adding 50 dollars a year to these properties. And I, to me, this is the most opportune time to think about raising assessments, is because of these lots that are going to come back into play here in the next four or five years. And for us to continue on pulling 2 million dollars a year out of our reserves, next year, let's say it's the district office, that's another 2 million dollars coming out of reserves, that we, pretty soon, your reserves are going to be to zero. This is a financial catastrophe, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, we are just on a roller coaster to zero, so I'm proposing we take a look at either raising assessments 50. either raising assessments $50 a year for every landowner, or we put in a capital improvement of something, of 50, something, just do something to offset this huge loss every year, and it's not gonna get any better because, again, I've listed things that need to be addressed. I'm sure once these things are addressed, you can take the assessments back down again, but you need to start building a cash fund to pay for this stuff, so. I guess I've said enough about that. And I just think we, you know, as supervisors, we need to step up to the plate here and, and take care of the future of the district and not just worry about pissing our neighbor off, you know, because we charged them an extra 50 bucks.
Some of those things you mentioned that I, I don't maybe agree with, number one, I don't think we need to get in the land buying business, we just need to let that thing go, whatever, and I don't know anything about a new swimming pool. I do agree that we're, we're burning a lot more, burning a lot more than, than we're bringing in, and, and, and I don't, I think we need to give it some thought as to what, how we, how we progress to it. Capital, a capital improvement fund is probably the way we need to do it, not, not by raising assessments, but, right now, we got good cash reserve. I don't think, I think we maybe need to get a little bit further down the road before we, before we talk about raising assessments overall, just to, just to maintain what we got, you know? I think, I think right now, we're okay, we get a little further down the road when, when this thing starts getting smaller, but, I mean, you got a lot, you got a lot of big items on, on, on your list that may or may not work, may, we may not be able to do it.
Well, that's my point, is that if you can start building that cash now, and putting it in the bank, and building your reserves, and I guess, again, I go back to those vacant lots, when they come back into the play, whether we buy them or not, doesn't really matter, but when they come back into play, if that rate is 294 plus a $50, if you wanna go capital improvement fund for the next 10 years, or five years, or whatever it is, you're starting to build the funds now. You don't wait till you get into a financial situation where you have to do it, you just start building now and, and get to that point. When I was working at, one of my major competitors was Kohler Plumbing, and, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is because every year, he would raise his prices 1%, 2% for no reason other than I just know that someday I'm gonna need 5% or 6%, and I'd rather do them 1% a year than wait five years and then try to get a 5%, 6%, 8%, 10% increase, because then people start moving around, they start looking for new vendors, new sources of supply, and you guys are gonna get yourself in the same situation here. That, or you just don't fix anything anymore, and you just maintain what you got, period. I mean, you're just, I, I think you're doing a disservice to the community by not creating some extra cash now.
So, with that said-
Kurt? Okay. Kurt?
Yeah.
I mean-
We've already taken several items that we've raised money from. Fire department, for one. We already increased the UFR fund. And what we're doing is, we're spending and spending and spending. And I keep sitting back here in this little corner, and nobody wants to listen to me. We gotta quit spending. We gotta keep our, we gotta start watching our pocketbook. And all we wanna do is keep spending this money on big items. Now, you keep talking about all these big items you got on your wish list, well, some of those items are gonna have to wait a little while. And you know what? Once we get these things taken care of, and we get them all paid off, then we can start doing some of these bigger items. But right now, we don't need to do them. We can't afford to do them.
The financial-
And we can't go out and start raising funds by just being another, hey, raise the taxes, raise the taxes. And that's exactly what you're doing.
What I'm saying is, the 3.7 million that you got in here, and that number doesn't change from year to year, it's pretty much constant.
We're trying to change it by bringing people in here, aren't we?
Oh, yeah, we're getting a lot of them, all right.
We're getting, we've sold several homes in here, haven't we?
Yeah. And what does that amount to? 670 by 50, that's less than $10,000 you raised? Come on, Dick, you gotta-
No.
I mean, fine, I don't have a problem not raising-
Please talk to the right person, Rick.
Oh, Rick, I'm sorry, excuse me.
You know-
Well, the point is, is that the stuff that I listed here, especially the, the district office, so next year, you're gonna have the same scenario, you're gonna have 3.7 million coming in, and you're gonna have prior year fund balance, and UFR fund to build the district office at 2 million, or whatever the heck that would cost, I have no idea. You're still, you're gonna be, now you're gonna be at $6 million instead of $10 million.
But we aren't gonna be paying for a cart pass on the golf course, we're not gonna be paying for the tennis court, we're not gonna be paying for the-
I don't, I don't see the golf expenses going down. 20,000 bucks. Come on, Dick.
We're not, what are we gonna do, are we gonna-
Sorry?
We're not gonna be paying for new cart paths, are we?
You know, I, I'm just bringing up a point, obviously, that's, I knew it'd be a sore subject, especially with you, and if you guys don't wanna do it, don't do it, I don't care, but I'm just making a point that this is financial disaster, that's all I'm saying. Period. Page number two, I guess.
It's, it's an issue, it's a, it's a real important issue, and I think we need to face it sooner or later, I don't think we need to face it necessarily this year, but I think going forward, we have to, and right now, we got good, our good reserves. And I agree, we're gonna have to build, we're gonna have to build it. We're probably gonna have to have a capital improvement fund sometime or another, depending on what we do with this carpet, with this carpet office, I shouldn't say carpet office, with this, with this city hall over there, because that's a nightmare, that's a damn nightmare. And then we got this, this, this other thing we're gonna do this year with this maintenance area, it's, it's serious, Rick, so we, we gotta consider it. I know it's the worst thing we can even think about, but I think it's, it's, I think Kurt brought up some good points, and we're gonna have to consider it at some point. I'm not too sure we have to do it in this budget, but, you know, I agree, I agree to disagree.
If, if a year ago, when I said, let's reduce it $25 because we were, because of the fire department, I would be all for raising it this year. But, no, no, we can use that money for other things, and we did, we used it real quick. Nobody wanted to back off on that $25, but we're paying it anyhow. We're paying it to Highlands County for the $25 for the fire department, and we're still paying it to the district.
Yeah, I haven't heard much kickback on that, though, I think eventually it's gonna, it's gonna be a better service. How many years has it been since we had an assessment increase?
Many.
About-
Seven, maybe?
Seven years.
Six or seven.
We had a schedule, when Mercer did this assessment study, they had a schedule that was pretty, pretty aggressive, I mean, it was really aggressive.
No, it wasn't seven years ago, it was, it was four and a half years ago, or four years ago, and, and we went up 15%.
It was more, more than that, it was two years at 14%. They went at four years and public outrage, cut it back, uh-
2008 was the last increase.
Stopped at two years, so it's been a while, but, uh, you gotta put things in the right pew. For example, um, we're raising, I think we're gonna be raising the water and sewer, right?
We've proposed an increase of $2.50 as we get to the utility budget, so that's for capital improvement.
And what we're doing is, we have a big-ticket item on the table, which is a maintenance center, right?
Correct.
That's the biggest thing we've had since clubhouse. Okay, but we're dealing with that because we're temporarily cutting into our, our, our reserve, but according to Jenny and you, we're replacing that with this increase within the next four years, or three years, is that correct?
No, that is not correct. The increase, the increase is only 111,000, and we're spending 1.4 million, so it'll take you 11 years to recoup it.
Well, we also put in the 320 already, so the 320 added, if you add another 100 to that, it's putting 420,000 into reserves.
But that isn't what he just said.
Okay.
He said the increase was gonna pay it back.
Well, what is it? Let's, instead of arguing about-
The increase won't cover, it'll be over a 10- or 11-year period.
Well, that's not what you told me at the last meeting. That's not what you said.
111, there's a portion of it.
We would replenish that.
Well, we're replenishing it at the rate of 320,000 per year, so, without the increase, so that was, that would be the, the four-year timeframe that we'd, we'd look at to replenish the UFR.
So, in other words, the increase adds to that 320.
If we do an increase, then it would actually replenish that faster, that's how I looked at it.
Yeah, in four years and-
Correct.
Five years.
Well, there we go, thank you very much, that's where I started.
Well, that's fine, but the point is-
Now, what is the point? The point is that, that Rick's making, on one side of the issue, you're on the other side of the issue, and the answer is obviously somewhere in between. And we have to do two things, we have to be very careful about what we're planning for, that we do it in a calculated, in a, in a proper manner. On the other hand, uh, we need to, I think, address additional revenue on a case-by-case basis, and right now, this year, we're gonna do the water and sewer, right? Now, we can't take, for example, if we, if, if we decide that we're gonna re, you know, redo the district office, that, that can't be handled by UFR fund, can it?
Yes.
It can be, yes.
It can or cannot?
It can, yes.
Well, there you go, there you go. Because to me, the most, the soundest approach is in that area, is in our, our utility area. Whereas you talk about assessments and that, you're getting into sacred land, I guess you call it.
Well, the assessments are never gonna be popular. I don't care if we do it this year or five years from now, they're still gonna throw fat over. But it would be a lot better to raise the assessments 50 than have to raise them 100.
Well, I don't think we have to raise them at all this year, 'cause we are, we are putting an increased, uh-
I'd just like to see-
What is it?
Well, if you, if you wait, then it's just, to Larry's point is, the longer you wait, the, the more you're gonna have to increase it in one pop, that's all it is. Or you don't, again, you can, you don't need to raise anything, as long as you don't fix anything, you just maintain what you got.
No, no, that's not, don't say fix. You're looking for our new, our new things out there, you're talking about redoing the, the district office, talking about another pool, those, those are optional issues.
Well, I wouldn't say they're optional, if you plan on growing the community, you gotta grow the services to go with it, and the rec, and we're selling this as a recreational area, and you've already told me the pool maxes out in the summertime now, so what happens and you bring 100 more families in here? I mean, it's just natural progression of growing community.
If you bring in 100 more families, you'll have the money coming in to be able to pay for another pool.
That would-
Now, Kurt, you, we've already raised a $2.5 on the water bill, and next year, we're raising in another $2.5 because of that's what Mr. Helbig asked for, and we agreed to it. So that's $5 in two years, all right? So that's 222,000 in two years, that's gonna go into the UFR fund, all right?
You made your point, I made my point.
We can move on, I, it's, it's not that big of a deal, I just wanted to go on record saying I don't agree with, not doing it.
I think, I think it's a valid, it's a valid argument, I just don't think it has to maybe happen, happen this year, because of, because of the reserve situation we're in. And it's like you said, you're, the UFR fund is a, is the way to do, way to do it.
How mu, how much money do we have?
It'll start growing, 220, $2,000 every year, every year, and, and, you know, and we're still the lowest guy on, lowest guy on the street.
That's why I keep harping, Tanya, on this damn capital improvement program, 'cause we don't have a program. All we have is a wish list, that somebody puts down a series of numbers, and we want this and this, for this year and next year and so forth. If you go through a proper capital improvement program, you'd have some of the answers that these guys are arguing about, because you don't just say, I want this, you have to say, how am I gonna pay for it?
I agree, point taken.
And, and, what have I said this for, what, three years now, four years?
Four years.
It's about time we woke up, and, and Kurt, Kurt has a good point in terms of, of the future needs, and we are getting into areas that we're gonna have to consider, but it's not for us to sit there and bounce the ball back and forth on a, on a Friday morning meeting on budget, it's for you guys to sit down there and really lay out what you think we need, when we need it, and how we're gonna pay for it. You should be coming to us about how we're gonna pay for it. We shouldn't be sitting there amateur night, Friday night, that's what I'm saying.
I want, I-
Point well made.
How mu, how much money do we have in the, um, oh, what is it?
Your UFR fund?
Wait.
General fund?
No.
The, um, Rob fund? Yeah, not all.
Um-
The UFR, 3, 3 million?
Fund?
No, the-
Went right out of my- We got a lot, how's that?
Well, we have a golf fund, the general fund-
No, no, it was, uh-
The reserves, the reserves?
When they build a house, you have to put up so much money for-
Oh, collateral?
Down payment?
No.
Impact fees?
Impact fees.
Impact fees, do we have any money?
We do, yes, we have a little over 700,000 in impact fees currently. Those fees are, were collected over the years to be used for new, new, it has to be new improvement, so new water line, new sewer line, those are the type of services that you can pay for using impact fee money.
And we have how much in there?
Over 700,000.
Thank you.
Well, let me point out the obvious, too. What we have is a real double standard here, 'cause we talk about golf, all bets are off. We subsidized golf last year by 1.3 million with the capital improvement. Yep, nobody says anything, they just transfer it from the general fund. Yeah, we got cart pass, we got this, we got that, but when we're talking about bathrooms, lousy, for 40, 40,000, we're sitting here like it's a worldwide crisis. Let's recognize that we have needs across the board, and we should be addressing those needs, and not just wipe golf every, every, every year. I'm sorry, I'm sputtering now, but it just, it, it drives me nuts that we have one standard over here for golf, and we have all the other over here for our needs, utilities, whatever you have it.
And that's what we wanna do, we wanna listen to the, not only to what the community has to say as far as what, what services they're looking for and their needs, but, I mean, that, that's our goal right now, is, is to, you know, we, we charge assessments to provide a benefit. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, we wanna use that, you know, to benefit our community.
You've got some good minds on your staff, you've been finance director, you've got Jenny, you've got other people, surely you can address his capital improvement requirements from the standpoint that I asked you to.
We can, yes.
How much are we making off those GPSs on the golf carts?
About 25,000.
Uh, 25,000, 20, 27, I think, this year. 27,000 this year.
We made 27,000 this year.
Yes, sir.
And how much did we pay for them?
80,000, because we're gonna pay it off in four years at 20,000, so we're ahead of schedule.
It was 164 total.
160-
I believe, I, I, I don't remember exactly, so-
164,000.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, 164 total, but there was 80,000 difference to go from the primary unit to the full-screen unit.
A hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. One sixty-four total, but there was eighty thousand dollar difference to go from the primary unit to the full screen unit.
Correct.
And that's what the advertising is doing, is paying for the upgrade. It isn't paying for the GPS.
That is correct. We're also getting paid back a dollar, a dollar a round. How much is that? At the end of the year, uh, you know, we'll look at the public rounds versus the, versus the member rounds.
All I'm saying is there was, there was, you know, eighty or ninety thousand dollars we could've saved on those GPSs.
Not really. It's a profit center.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause not, year five, we're making money. Year six, we're making money. Year seven, we're making money.
Maybe, because...
Well, maybe not, too.
What I'm telling you is, I've, I've talked to a few people when they've come in.
Yeah.
And they really didn't, they didn't use them and they didn't pay attention to them. And they didn't like the fact that they had advertising pop up while they were trying to read them.
But we did for, we did, we did come up with a plan to pay for them. I mean, there is a plan in place to pay for them.
I'm just telling you that...
I mean, I think at the, at the end of it, the plan was to have them paid for within the four years, just like, just like you said. And that was through the advertising and through the dollar per round, coming back to the, to general fund, correct? Tanja?
Correct.
All right, let's move on, page two. I only gotta make one comment, and it's just a minor thing, but it seems like every time I go in the district office, somebody's got a different Son of Lake shirt on. And I'm just, do we have some kinda program, dress code? I mean, does everybody get fifteen shirts or, I, I don't, I don't know. It just seems weird. I mean, yeah, why don't we get shirts? I don't, it's just a minor point. I, I don't know, I just, it, I mean, it's just, each department go buy shirts for their employees whenever they want to, or is there some procedure or something?
Departments, departments pick out the shirt, the shirt styles and the shirt types that, that they wanna wear. Uh, of course, our roads crew, uh, they're, they, we actually buy shirts for them. Our utility crews have decided to use, uh, Centos, which is a uniform company, because their clothing and everything was getting ruined more often, of course, than our roads crews. So, we're, we're now utilizing Centos, which is, that's the same as golf maintenance. They utilize a uniform company.
So you're saying the employees in the district office buy their own shirts?
No, they, they are provided four shirts a year.
Four, okay.
Four.
That's a, that's really all I wanted to know.
Okay. I know of one that did. But I don't, but anybody, you're welcome to, you know, request a shirt if you like a certain style or design.
Not really.
Okay.
Page three, any, any changes?
Page three just has the thirty thousand increase for marketing.
Which we already talked about, I guess. Page four. Here, we're gonna make some adjustments, right? Well, you wanna talk about your rec room, bathroom, storage shed thing?
Yes, um, when, when asking last time what we need the storage facility for, there's a couple of things that I forgot about. And of course, Jonathan is definitely more, um, has a higher opinion about it because he's over here and sees what he needs. But we have a lot of pool chemicals that we have to purchase, mostly the salt, the alkalinity. And we are spending a lot of time, especially during the summer months when we have a lot of rain and we go through chemicals a lot more, a lot more splash out, um, that we have to spend to go purchase salt and bring it back. And we don't have a place to store a large bulk where it would take down less, you know, take less time out of our, out of their day to go and get the merchandise. Sometimes a run to Home Depot, um, to get salt would take more than two hours. It takes more than two hours right now. And then we can only put so many bags in the Explorer, and we only have so much room to store it. We do have a company that has quoted a price for us that could actually deliver a pallet at a time, which would save a tremendous amount, um, of running back and forth and, and being able to actually store. And the salt is just one example. Alkalinity is another, of course, all our special event stuff, but mostly the pool chemicals is a huge, is a huge factor in the storage facility.
How much can we save by buying a pallet plus the labor?
Do you have that information? We can get you those numbers, but it is, it is a savings.
If you had a pool service that maintained that, would you still have to keep an inventory here to...
Penchipenny, for example, has, that's where we get most of our pool chemical from. They have a pool service, um, and, uh, just from being in there, listening, you still pay for your chemicals, they just do it, the service for you. So, um, I mean, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be much of a difference.
They just provide the labor, basically.
Correct. They're providing the labor if you don't have somebody, you know, trained on staff to do it.
So what are you proposing?
Well, we would, in, in talking at the last meeting, we'd like to have an extra bathroom facility over here, plus a storage facility on the back end of it, um, that we can store some of these things. Now, if bathroom facilities isn't a feasible option in this year's budget, then we, we would really like at least a storage facility that we can, we can put up.
That would be a freestanding building?
Yes. We'd have to put a concrete slab down, um, and probably have, you know, some electricity going to it, but, but essentially, yes, that's, that's what we, we would request for this year's budget.
Hey, what about hookups if you did the bathroom? Is that available here?
Yep, that, yes, it is. We spoke in with John and...
You wanna put it in that place you had on the map?
Yes, that's where we would...
Which is over here?
Yes.
What page is the map?
Page thirty-two.
And you're comfortable sixty-five thousand will do the whole thing?
That's the figure that, um, I was given. I probably should go back and make sure that, that those, with the storage facility adding on to it is, is accurate. Given the, the quote that I received on the two stall bathrooms for sixty-seven thousand, that does not include storage, so...
I thought it included everything, cause that's what it says.
Well, at, at the, before I got that quote from the company, I was consulting with Greg, and that's the number that he gave me, so...
Well, then why don't you look into getting a, a, a good number for us for the next go around?
Okay.
And, uh...
Absolutely.
The goal is to see if we're gonna have restrooms built at both facilities to actually have consistency between the two as far as the design. That would be, that would be our goal.
To me, wouldn't you want the design to look like the, uh, the current clubhouse or something?
We do, yes. Mm-hmm. But I'm saying the, the restrooms, the, you know, the, the design part, consistency between the restrooms built here and also at the tennis courts.
Would be the same, or they would both look like the clubhouse?
Well, the one in the tennis courts, I mean, we could look at it, maybe having a little bit different, but I, I think...
The color scheme.
Color scheme and whatnot.
It would be essentially the same.
Well, that wouldn't change the dollars too much, would it?
Now, keep in mind too, though, that this, this building over here would be eligible for RPAC funding because it will be a public facility versus the building over the tennis courts.
And you're confident you can, can control the damage and the vandalism and all that? Of course, you got one over here, right? Same difference.
We're more confident with being able to control it over on this side because it's more visible. We can see...
This bathroom over here, what it, that has access from the pool area, right?
Correct.
So what, what happens if you would close the door on the outside access, so it's only a bathroom for the pool, and then you got this bathroom for public?
We can, we can do that.
Would that be a consistent?
That's, that would be a, a great solution. Yes.
Well, I guess I can go home now. I finally come up with something good here.
That would definitely alleviate a lot of...
I think they've talked about that because that's a lot of our issues right now, so...
It's a blind spot on that side, and we just can't, you know, see a lot what's going on versus over here would be...
All right, on page five, you've got a hundred and fifty thousand in there for the racket club restroom. What's the number gonna be now?
I think we talked about going down to seventy-five.
Okay.
Cutting in half and seeing what building we can come up with for seventy-five thousand.
Do you have the, um, proposed bathroom over here in addition to that? You had a price tag for this one?
Sixty.
Well, the original price tag that was put in the budget was sixty-five thousand, but I don't believe that's gonna be an accurate number to add the storage facility on, on to the back of it.
Well, what I'm saying is that was apart from the, any, any cost associated with the tennis court.
Correct. That was completely separate.
All right, so we have a net reduction, I'd say, of seventy-five thousand for the...
For the tennis facility, yes.
But the other number's gonna go up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Slightly.
We could go ahead and make the other, I mean, both of them be seventy-five to be consistent for right now, just for budget reasons only.
That's fine.
If you wanna do that. Can we, can we do that, Tanja?
Yeah.
Raise the sixty-five to seventy-five and then reduce the hundred and fifty down to seventy-five.
I know in a previous budget, we had bathrooms budgeted for like forty thousand and, why is, why are these so much more expensive, I guess? Unless the other number was so bogus, I don't know, but...
Those, both those numbers, um, those were cost estimates given to me, and we decided to up it. And then, like I said, once I went and got a, a more concrete number from a construction company, that obviously is going to change it, so...
Okay, all right. It's just a comment, nothing to do about it. On that same page, I got canopy shades for playgrounds for forty thousand. I, I don't have a problem leaving the dollars in there, but I don't like your solution. I just think those vinyl covers aren't, aren't the way to go. And I'd like you to look at building a more permanent, like what you've got, the gazebo you got there now, is matching that and build one big gazebo over the whole thing. I don't know what that would cost, but...
It's gonna cost, that, that will cost probably, um, between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars.
I don't believe it, but...
Okay. I'll get, I'll ask for more concrete pricing from the construction company as well.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking you to do. Page six, anything? Seven?
Seven, yes. We're code enforcement.
Code enforcement, yep.
After speaking with Mike Curley regarding code enforcement and, uh, the, the future changes that we're proposing, he, he feels necessary to add twenty hours per week to, to code enforcement. In addition, th, this person would be a full-time person. He would be half, half of his duties would be code enforcement. The other half of his duties would be security. So not, not only are we proposing a twenty hour increase in code enforcement, but this is a, a full-time, uh, position that we're also proposing.
I, I don't know. Mike, I don't think, I don't think... Well, let me, let me finish. I don't think it's, it's, how, how are you gonna do fifty-fifty? Why not have a code enforcement guy, period? Cause our problem, our problem is not, uh, you know, you've got the ideas and so forth, and I think that's good. You're gonna make those proposals. But to me, the crux of the problem, uh, is enforcement. And we're not getting that done. So, well...
All right, um... Let me, let me help you out a little bit.
Bob does the best he can, okay? You, you know, I mean, he gives, we give over five hundred citations out of the year, okay? We have a lot of renters, he's gotta go by the law. Does he, uh, I mean, are there some areas that he could get better? Absolutely. But we all can get better in some areas. Do we need more help because we, because the community, um, is getting older? Yes. Because, um, do we have to make some changes in, in, um, our laws here? Absolutely. But, um, I think a twenty hour, uh, to save money would help us here at Son of Lake. I don't think we need a full-time right now. I mean, if I do, I'll tell ya.
Basically, the way you and I talked was that Bob is very good at the paperwork. He, he knows how to do the program. He knows how, but he's not strong in dealing with the people. And the reason we were thinking along this line is that you get a guy out there that's willing to go knock on the door and say, "Move that car, mow the lawn," whatever has to be done. And if it doesn't get done, you got Bob doing the paperwork to keep making sure it flows. So Bob probably, as you start doing his conversion, would start doing a little more security work and to fill up his forty hours because he's not on the road running around. This other guy would be doing it. What's his name, Phillips or something? So that was kinda the purpose of that whole thing. And then obviously, you know, you, you need somewhat of a succession plan for that particular, it's a one-man department. And you need to have somebody in place for the next step, you know? And, and this Philip guy is, used to be a county sheriff for something.
He worked for the sheriff's department.
Something in there, and he's got the, the attitude to go do what we need to get done, so this is...
And he's also a resident also, his parents live here.
So that's, that's kinda the planning behind this whole thing, so...
Well, I have no problem with that, but it's the execution that I keep worrying about.
Well, we still have to go by the law. Okay, you know?
Mike, Mike, I know that.
You know?
Mike, knocking on doors, that's the key.
Right, I knock on doors, Bob knocks on doors.
Where, where is Jerry Giac when we, when we need him?
I don't, I...
I don't know either, but you, okay.
That's what we're trying to...
I'm not gonna argue any further, but... Anyone, anything that I don't think we need, we need, not, um, uh, a twenty-hour position would help us next year. I'm not gonna come back and ask some more, I hope. I think Philip will do a good job with twenty hours to work with Bob. Bob will teach him. Philip did go to school with us, uh, last, um, a, a few weeks ago. And I think with all the old homes, um, and all the renters, um, we do need someone. Plus, he's also gonna be working...
Is he full-time? Is he, he gonna have half of his time on, uh, security?
Yes.
That's what we're proposing, a full-time position going into October for him.
He will also be working nights and weekends, so, you know, that will help.
Yeah, it'll cover, yeah.
It'll cover us on that, too.
We got a lot of action on Saturdays.
Saturdays, well, on weekends, we get a lot of, you know, people...
Okay, we'll try it, we'll try it.
And, and, and we also increase our watch orders. Now, uh, Jerry's going on vacation for three weeks. Philip will, Philip will also fill in on that part of it, too. We do, right now, we do, uh, two hundred and seventy-two watch orders a week. That, and what that means is we're visiting every home once a week. And that's really time consuming. We also put a person on, uh, the golf course, which has worked out very well also.
All right, we're done with page seven? Page eight?
Page eight, we, I had no changes on the salary wages, but I added additional benefit costs in this department. If, um, now that we're proposing the full-time position, we need to add in, uh, for life and health insurance here. That's the only change.
The one thing that we discussed at the last budget meeting and even before that was a, the deputy sheriff program, to have them come in. And I thought we, at the last budget meeting, we agreed to put fifteen thousand dollars in this, uh, security for that purpose. And I'm just surprised it's not there. And I, so I asked Mike, I said, "Do you change your mind? You don't like this?" He says, "No, it's a great program. I love it, and I think we need to do it." So, why isn't it there, I guess?
I'm sorry, that was missed. I thought the fifteen thousand was for the streetlights.
There, there is fifteen thousand for the streetlights.
We did add that, um, that, that was missed as part of the, the budget changes.
Okay.
Mike is proposing, you wanna tell him what you're proposing for that?
To bring a sheriff's department in at least twice a month, uh, four hours a shift to do speeding, uh, uh, speeding stop signs or whatever else we need them. He'll actually be working for us here, and he'll do a lot of traffic, uh, stops. His salary, I, I think it's like forty dollars an hour. And we have to use him, Tanja, I'm not really sure, is it three hours or four hours a shift? Three hours a shift, so, um...
Well, based on what you just said, we don't need fifteen thousand in there then, cause my fifteen thousand was...
Well, original, Kurt, originally, we, we said we would do it, uh, once a week. So, I, I think that's where we got that. Kurt, originally, we, we said we would do it, uh, once a week, so I, I think that's where we got to the fifty.
Fifteen, no, fifteen thousand comes to eight hours per week.
Okay.
That's two shifts per week. And now you're saying you want two shifts per month, so if that's the case.
I would at least, at least like to get them twice a month. If I can get them more, it's gonna help. Something like, we, we get a lot of complaints about speeders and people running through stop signs.
Well, seven thousand would get you four times a month.
Four times.
Once a week.
Well, if we could get, raise it ten thousand, plus then we could also use them for the extra, uh, the extra, uh, the fireworks and things like that. Like, we're gonna have somebody come in tonight, only because we're not sure of what type of, uh.
You need a sheriff's department for the fireworks, you said? Is that what you're saying?
Just at the, just, just at the clubhouse, we're gonna have them walk around because we really don't know what to expect tonight.
Okay.
You know, I can't imagine. We spend millions, we send the county millions of dollars every year in property tax. And we gotta pay for a sheriff to come in here and patrol our streets?
This will be a part-time.
It's ridiculous.
Well.
I mean, I'd go to Susan Benton, I'd say, look, we're giving you an office over here, we're giving you millions of dollars every year and we gotta pay for a part-time guy to come in here and patrol our dang on streets. I think it's ridiculous to, to, to do that. I really do.
Well.
I mean, we're part of the county. They just take our money and go to the bank with it every year and we get nothing.
Plus all the financing rights to keep the money, too. We don't get any of that either.
Well, I know it, but that, but it's, it's, it's ridiculous.
This was a very last.
I think we oughta really put, push, push them to make sure we can get a, a normal patrol in here without paying extra money for it.
We do, we do have that. There, there's a normal patrol. What, what I think Mike is talking about is, is specific targeting of situations in here, which is traffic.
Just for tonight, we, we wanna be safe, you know, for those fireworks and we, we felt, I mean, this is very last minute, too.
And I was the one who asked for it, actually. I was the one that asked for it because, um.
This person would walk around the facilities, yeah, that.
People would try to bring their own beer in.
Yeah, but let's be clear, Mike, let's be clear. There is regular patrol by the sheriff's office.
There is. But there are certain areas that we wanna target that we get a lot of complaints about. Um, a lot of complaints about speeding, people going through stop signs, uh, and when, when, we actually talked to the sheriff's department, David. Uh, he gave forty tickets in, in, in a span of two hours going through one stop sign. So obviously, we can't give tickets, so there is a need. If, he's assigned here, they'll give us that, uh, that timer where any area we want him.
And they put that money in their pocket, too. You know, that, I can't understand.
I understand, but he's still here.
That's part of it I can't understand.
They're not gonna win that one, David.
Well, I know we're not gonna win that one, but, but I think, I think they oughta know where to sit when they come in here and do their normal patrol and, and kill two birds with one stone. I really, I, I can't imagine that we can't get that.
I think it's worth asking for, certainly. I think you should do that. And I think that number in the budget should be half of what.
Three thousand dollars would cover, for the year, would cover two times a month.
Two times a month.
If you wanted to try that. If you wanted to try it four times a month, it would be six grand.
Cut it in half, make it seventy-five hundred and we'll start there.
Okay, we can start there.
Okay. Page nine?
Alright.
Alright, I got it.
Ooh, here we go.
Okay. I keep looking at this maintenance thing, this million four. Was that, yeah, million four-twenty. And I, I think by and large, this board thinks that number's large and I think they just walked away after we had a discussion and said, well, irregardless, we're just, this is, this is, this is what we're gonna use. This is the way we're gonna plan it and this is the way we're gonna design it. I would like to see, when they go into the design phase on this thing, to do another option. Number one, I think, I think that they could increase the size of the tractor barn so that the equipment can be stored in the tractor barn rather than in that building. Knowing the disciplines that we have, if you, if you store that, if you bring that equipment in every day, wash it down and run it in that building, that building's gonna be a mess. It's not gonna be a clean environment for the mechanics to work, I don't think. So I'd like to see an optional design where we increase the size of the tractor barn to put the, put the equipment outside where it goes. They can wash it, they can wash it down, bring it in there and leave it, leave it there instead of bringing it inside. Because it's gonna be a mess. It's, it's just gonna be a mess. And have a, have, and minimize the main building size, scale that down somewhat and reconfigure the offices and the meeting rooms and the break rooms and the bathrooms and, and, uh, see what we can come up with. And, and when we go out for bid, we bid, we bid it both ways. I think, I think it's an overkill.
Gator is addressing the revisions for the main building.
He's what?
He's addressing the revisions, taking another look at the size and, and layout of the main building that you're talking about.
But I don't think it has to be big enough to house all that equipment. I really don't. I think it's gonna be a mess.
I have no problem with that. I'm just saying that, that Tanya and I met with, uh, Paulson.
Oh, okay. You're way ahead of me.
But, but your point, your point should be, should be added.
He's gonna bring it back to the board prior to any, any, uh, before he puts it out for bid. So he wants to bring that back to the board. But for budget purposes, right now, we can, we can leave, leave the money the way it is and adjust it later.
They, they makes a very good point and that needs to be passed on. I'm not sure it's been passed on about the tractor barn.
Anything else on?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'll go back to my old, uh, song about, uh, roads and sidewalks. We throw a number up there and, and we have no idea what we're gonna do with it. I had suggested that we take a hiatus on all of it but Cortez and apply that against the, um, the maintenance facility. We don't have a game plan for, for resurfacing for this year, do we?
I have an assessment performed by Highlands County in March of two thousand thirteen. He emailed it to me. The county emailed it to me this week. I haven't had a chance to review it and it's the assessment, the road assessment is, was performed for all the roads east of Cortez. So I'd like an opportunity to take a look at the assessment and what's there and we can, we can address that, I mean, at the next meeting if you'd like.
I'm suggesting, again, I'm suggesting we can carve out something for this year and apply that to the, to the maintenance facility project.
It can be done.
Oh, you're on page ten.
Yeah, he's, he's a page ahead of us here.
That can be done, but if you.
Anxious, I guess.
If you'd like for me to come back to you at the next meeting, uh, when I get a chance to do the full analysis of what, what the road assessment is, then I, then we can discuss it at that time.
Well, I, I think, yeah.
I agree with your thoughts, by the way, on that, really.
But I think, on the other hand, too, is if the roads need repair, we shouldn't be cutting back if they actually need the work.
I'd like to.
It might be five hundred thousand instead of three. It could go the other way.
No.
Just as a comment.
Well, I looked at this in, in great detail with, uh, Mike Wright last year and the year before. And last year, I got the feeling, except for Cortez, now that's, that's a different ballgame, that we were kinda pushing to resurface roads. For the sake of pushing, we have that, that whole neighborhood that we resurfaced, uh, on Mike Wright's suggestion because he thought that was a prime development area. So I think our roads east of Cortez generally are in pretty good shape. They're a sixty percent plus. But one, one thing we did not do is we did not finish the Cortez project because of budget. We have most of that up to the curve and so forth, but we have to decide whether or not we, we do the extension of that. Other than that, I think we can very easily take a hiatus for, for one year and apply that to the, uh, maintenance facility. Anything we can do to cut down that, that cost helps.
We can take it down to zero or if you wanna, uh, have me do a review of the county assessment.
Do the review, so we got a decent number.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, no sense taking it to zero, just take it to zero. We need to know what the needs are.
I need to know, I need a chance, an opportunity to review what's been given to me.
We had to leave a little bit in there just for emergency purposes, but let's review it first.
Alright. Done with that?
Yep.
Page eleven?
Well, the drainage maintenance is two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in this drainage maintenance. Is Gator looking at that unit five thing as well? And you're gonna come back with a, a different number? We're gonna decide what we're gonna do.
Yes, uh, I did not get an opportunity to go out with Gator to those areas and we've talked to him about some alternatives. You wanna speak to that, Kurt, a little bit? Uh, what, some ideas?
Yeah, last time I suggested about side boring those culverts out and putting a plastic or an appropriate sleeve in there so he wouldn't have to, uh, basically rip up the driveways and, and, uh, he wanted to go out and look at them because I went over there and looked at unit five and I rode my bike up and down every street and I didn't see one driveway failing, so I'm saying, why do we wanna go in and start ripping up driveways? I can see unit two, we got an issue, but in unit five, if we can just put sideboard, uh, eight inches, twelve inches, whatever the size is, and I know they sideboard all the time, so why can't we think along those lines? And again, we were gonna go out there with Gator and talk about it, but we haven't got to that point yet, so.
So that two-hundred-and-thirty dollar number's gonna be in there until we get a better number?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Alright, page eleven? Okay. I guess we're done with that. Utility funds next? Alright. Anything on the summary page?
I can go over the summary page. You wanna just go page, page by page?
Yeah, I think so. If nobody's got any comments on the summary page. The only comment I have, it's not on the summary page, but it is on, looking at the, here's the part, I'm gonna pull a, a Dick Miller here cause, you know, the numbers don't add up here. If we're increasing revenue by a hundred-and-eleven thousand.
Page you on.
I'm just talking right now. We're increasing revenues by a hundred-and-eleven thousand, we're decreasing expenses by forty-five thousand, but we have to increase reserves by two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. I, I got lost in that one. I can't figure that one out.
That's cause we have a presentation change of the way that we budgeted our Euro funds.
Oh, okay.
Okay? There's, we have a change. And what Jenny and I decided, and this goes back before my time, but, um, in the proper way to reflect, op, we're gonna use operating funds to, uh, we're gonna contrib, operating funds will be used towards capital and that's where, you know, we're contributing three-hundred-and-twenty thousand a year to Euro. We need to show that in our budget and that's what we've done. This, that's the biggest change, uh, from the last, uh, budget workshop that we had. So what we're proposing is three-hundred-and-twenty, we're currently contributing three-hundred-and-twenty thousand from our operating funds into Euro and we're proposing another one-hundred-and-eleven. So, am I close here? That's on page six. So what we've done is we've added four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand as a reserve because we're using operating funds to contribute to our reserves. And that's, that's the biggest change in this, in this budget presentation. Did I have the numbers right?
Three-twenty.
Three-twenty-five. Okay, three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in addition to the one-hundred-and-eleven that we're proposing.
And we're replenishing, uh, that fund four years, right?
Every year.
No, I know that, but I mean, I'm trying to get back that damn maintenance yard.
Well, if, if we spend, if we're, if we're replenishing the Euro at the rate of four-hundred-and-twenty thousand a year, then our maintenance barn will essentially be paid for after, what, three and a half years, depending on what the cost is. If the cost is one-point-two million, then over three years. So that's what that two dollars and fifty cents does.
That's a good thing.
That's a, that's a two-dollar-and-fifty cent increase to the water bill, to the water utility base rate.
Alright, and if we raise it again, two dollars and fifty cents next year, that's even gonna make it be paid off even sooner.
That is correct. If you want those, those operating monies to go into the Euro fund, it will, it will, uh, increase the payback rate.
So it'd be paid off in like two years? Unless Kurt gets his hands on it.
Total, I'm still.
No, he didn't.
Oh, I heard him, I heard him. Um. So we're, we're gonna spend one-point-six million. Am I looking at this right? Is that what we're gonna spend? I'm on page five. A total operation, so that's, we're gonna spend one-point-six million, right?
That's for the operations budget. We also have, this is one department out of three within this fund.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to get, I wanna get the total. How much are we spending totally? Oh, two-point-eight million.
Two-point-eight.
Correct.
And we're taking in one, two-point-one million, right?
We are taking in two-point-one million, yes.
So we're still under seven-hundred thousand. A break-in-even, basically.
Yeah, this is not a, it's not a break-even budget because some of the projects that were budgeted this year are, are not gonna be completed until, until next year. So that, that is another reason why it's not a break-even budget.
Alright.
Break-even, you're talking about balance?
It, it's balanced, but what we're doing to balance it is we're using, uh, prior-year reserves.
Where's the game plan to?
That, that is correct, yes.
Alright, let's, let's start with page one. Anything on page one? Page two? Page three?
I had a, I had a question on this, the, uh.
I have some info.
The skid steer, did you, uh, and, and some of these, uh, some of these other maintenance items? Is that the old one that you got?
No, this is, uh, that's for the, the skid steers that you're talking about.
Holy cow.
This is a big board?
Good lord.
Sticky fingers.
You can buy a nice sports car for that.
For ninety, well, ninety, ninety-three-six-six-two.
Ninety-three thousand dollars.
We got one.
I guess my question is, I, do we need two skid steers with two mulchers on it? I mean, that's, that's twenty-five percent of the cost, just the mulcher head. I mean, is that?
It is.
It is needed or it is twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent, yes.
Do you feel it's needed or, I mean?
It's, it's been represented to me that it is needed, but we will have two skid steers until we, I'd say for at least several years. It is the, it's the most diverse piece of equipment that we have and is used by, uh, essentially all departments.
I understand. Is the, the one we have now, is it kinda run its course? I mean, is it important?
Not yet. It, it still has a couple of years' life.
And I suppose the head on the first one, the mulcher head, doesn't fit on the second one, I suppose.
I would have to ask. I don't know. That's a good question. I can, I can inquire about that.
I'd like to know that.
Should.
Well.
We, we don't know. We'd have to find out those.
Wes got them.
Oh, you got a mulcher. That thing, that thing is fantastic. It's well worth the money, but I'm just not sure we need two of them, that's all. Yeah, that thing, uh, you can chew up a small army with that thing.
We're not twenty-three thousand, but I'm sure it would fit. Cat makes it so they should go together.
Okay. Do you have any more questions?
Unless they're buying a bigger unit and it don't fit, but it ought to be, it ought to be the same. I mean, it's just the same, we bought, this is, this is a, what's the date of this? Oh, okay, this is, this is the old quote, quote from the original.
July.
Two thousand and fourteen. October?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, okay.
July eighth, that was the quote.
Okay, okay. This is a new one.
Do you want me to, I'm, I'm sorry. Do you want me to find out about the, the mulcher and?
I would think, yeah.
And we think, okay.
Do we really need that part?
Yeah.
And what do we use that thing for besides mulching? Do we use it for, I guess we got a post hole digger for it or something?
I think we use it to fill in...
It's got a bucket on it, probably, okay, all right. Oh, okay.
It's got all kinds of attachments.
Okay. Which are included, I assume? Hydraulics, ridge. I don't know, I like to question the second part. I don't see any other attachments other than the mulcher. So, I'm not sure this is a perfect quote either, if we need to use it for all these other things. So, maybe the current, current attachments flip over, you not use this too far.
I'll find out, I'll find out.
Okay. Do you have any more questions, Dave, on that?
Dervis Bear, here is 2,500, but it's 5,900 to install it?
I don't know.
Doesn't make any sense.
I don't know. What is it, PRC layer?
It's a, it's the rack up front to, so you don't run stuff through the radiator and that kinda stuff.
Oh, is that what that is? I was thinking it was for the driver, windshield or something for the driver. That don't matter, you guys can figure that out, so...
One more item in this page. I wanted to provide you a detail of account number 5374600, repairs and maintenance, as requested at the last meeting. What this, this'll give you an idea of what costs are flowing through that account and the vendors. Let me hand that out now.
Okay. Well, I'm talking about all these, all these maintenance accounts, and there was no...
This is on page, we're still on conservation.
Oh, okay.
This is page three. Repairs and maintenance. I'm just giving, I'm just giving you a detail of the vendors and what we spend.
You're talking about utilities?
Yes, this is conservation and resource management. I'm just, yeah, I'm just giving, I'm just giving you a, if you, if you wanna know, it's just requested of me last meeting. This is the repairs and the vendors that we use.
I have some other detail reports for the operational fund, so you can look over those at your convenience, and then let me know if you have any questions.
Dave, you got any more on the skid steer thing? Okay, page four? Page five?
Gator has provided a map of our manholes here in the district, and we're currently evaluating those manholes and prioritizing the repairs for those. Just wanna let you know that was asked of me at the last meeting.
We ever fix, fix that one on Ponce de León?
We have not.
Why not?
That one hasn't been fixed.
Don't...
Well, I, I thought maybe you were involved in or something.
No, I go by it, it still has a crime, crime scene tape on it.
I was told that it was taken care of.
Well, I need, I need to make a note and check on it again.
Check on that.
Well, if I remember correctly, yesterday I drove by it. It still had paper around it.
All right. Anything else on page five? Page six? I guess that's it.
Can I ask you, Tanya, please, on what you just gave us, this detailed listing?
Yes.
What is that last column? With all the big numbers?
It's a cumulative total.
Running total of all this time?
A running total of the cost, yes, sir.
Yeah, all right.